... planning board meeting, if I could have a roll call.
Craig Smith.
John Hudson.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Bob Wilbark.
Jason Perez-Stevens.
And if you'd all join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to start our meeting tonight by welcoming our newest victim, I mean, planning board alternate Craig Smith, welcome. Happy to have you. We have two upcoming meeting dates, July 2nd and July 16th, but we have nothing on our July 2nd agenda. So do I have a motion to cancel the July 2nd meeting?
No, no move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright. So that means that our next two upcoming meeting dates will be July 16th and August 6th. Pam, I'm sorry, I'm gonna hold over the approval of the minutes, I haven't had a chance to look at them yet. The first item on our agenda is a decision for Paline Site Plan on Ryan Drive.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Do we have a chair?
Oh. Yep. Did our easel?
You get on your drop, you get the whole.
I get on that chair?
Bit the dust?
Before the round here.
Alright. That's fine, since it's a decision, it's not a public hearing, so we're okay. Brendan, Michelle, Joe, Scott, anything we should discuss before we move into the neg deck?
I think Joe can speak a little bit about the stormwater, but they did make their submission, it was reviewed, and I believe we're satisfied at this point.
Yeah, the last meeting we were at, when they closed the public hearing, there were still a couple of items to be resolved with the SWIP, and they've since put together a revised model and drainage analysis, and done their soil testing. Based on that, we did another review of the SWIP, and we're really just down to some fairly minor comments. We think they, you know, after looking at it a couple of different ways, we're confident that it's gonna mitigate any potential increase in runoff in the area, and won't have an effect on the existing pond out there. So we are recommending, subject to the conditions of our latest letter, that it be approved tonight. And we also put together the negative declaration for the board to consider.
Okay. Did the changes to the SWIP and the calculations affect the plan at all, or anything material on the plan?
No.
No.
Site layout hasn't changed since the previous, the original versions of the plan were mainly additional details and some minor notes.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, it was, the substance was there before, it was just the calculations had to be, you know, reworked to make sure it was as we expected it was gonna perform.
Okay.
And they also found a bug.
Found a bug, right. We swatted it.
Oh, in the, right, you said you thought there was something wrong with the calculations. Okay. Okay. Michelle or Brendan, anything?
No.
Should we go over? Okay. Any board members, any questions before I offer the neg deck? Okay, I have a negative declaration for the Paline Site Plan. It's a 10,000 square foot building comprised of 900 square feet for office, 2,000 square feet for garage, and 7,100 general storage square feet, along with a related outdoor storage and parking in an I-2 district. It's an unlisted action under SEACER. Our location is at 26 and 10 Ryan Drive, and we considered a short EAF, the pre versus post drainage report, and a full SWIP in considering this negative declaration. We identified several items as environmentally relevant, both the stormwater quantity and quality, potential traffic impacts, visual screening, as well as wetland and aquatic resources. With regard to the first, stormwater quantity and pollution prevention, a detailed engineering analysis and SWIP has been submitted. We reviewed it, the analysis revealed that the runoff rate and elevation of the downstream water body, Melly Pond, will be reduced as a result of the proposed stormwater practices. Detailed erosion and sediment control plans with associated notes and details have been incorporated within the project and within the SWIP, and a long-term enforceable maintenance agreement will be entered into by the owner with the town in order to ensure proper maintenance in perpetuity. Are you comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. As such, no significant impact from stormwater from this project is expected. The second potential impact was traffic. We had concern raised from the public regarding accidents at the site, and on and around that site with Ryan Drive and Route 82. We reviewed the accident history, and within the accident history, we found, the review concluded that the site distance is adequate, and that there were no severe accidents in the recent past that involved multiple vehicles. I think if you recall, there was a lot with the car versus animal type accidents. The proposed project plans depict truck turning movements for the largest sized delivery vehicle that's anticipated, which is a WB-62, and the turning movements and related analysis resulted in some revision to the proposed site entrances in order to improve the site circulation. The plan proposes new curbing, grade modification, signage, and striping improvements per the terms of a highway, town highway work permit, and the applicant has provided 16 parking spaces, whereas only 11 are required. As such, no significant impacts from this project is expected with regard to traffic. The third item was visual screening that we identified as potentially relevant. The proposed project, while it's in a heavy industrial district, we recognize it is near some residential homes. Therefore, to avoid impacts to neighboring properties, we've included fencing, walls with fences, and landscaping to visually screen the site and act as a partial noise buffer from surrounding uses. To control dust, the applicant will use best management practices, including wetting down areas, misting, or similar means as noted on the plans. And in addition, to reduce the potential for noise from heavy machinery, no material processing or any screening of materials will be allowed on-site. The applicant will be required to enter into a legally binding agreement with the town to ensure proper maintenance in perpetuity for the landscaping and screening. Comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay. As such, no significant visual noise or air impacts from this project are expected. And the last environmental impact we identified was wetland and aquatic resources. The site plan was designed and modified to minimize impacts to onsite wetlands and wetland buffers. However, a small amount of work of federal, small amount of federal wetland, 0.055 acres, is to be removed as part of the site work. The applicant has received a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers in order to permit the related disturbance of existing federal wetland, and in addition, a wetland permit will be required from the town for site work within a town wetland buffer. Majority of the site work will be outside the town regulated buffer, and therefore, no direct wetland impact to the offsite wetland would result from the proposed project due to the stormwater management measures proposed by the applicant. Additionally, no significant impact to offsite wetland from stormwater runoff or construction is expected. We had no other issues identified as relevant, and therefore, we conclude the project would not have a significant impact to the environment. Does anyone second the negative declaration?
Second.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
And Bob is opposed, and Craig, have you had sufficient time to review the application?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So we have the negative declaration approved. Does someone want to offer the resolution?
Sure.
Thanks, Mike.
Resolution of site plan approval. Name of the site plan, Paline Site Plan. Name of the applicant, Paline Construction Corp. Location, Ryan Drive and Route 82. Resolution offered by planning board member, Michael O'Brien. Whereas, an application for planning board approval of a site development plan pursuant to chapter 194 of the Town of East Fiskil Code for a over 10,000 foot, square foot building, warehouse, and outdoor equipment and landscape material storage was submitted by Paline Construction Corp. on a set of drawings entitled Paline Site Plan prepared by PRG Engineering PLC, latest revision dated May 30th, 2013. And whereas, the subject property of 3.45 acres is located at Ryan Drive and Route 82 and designated on the Town of East Fiskil tax maps as grid number, oh boy, 655801008734033735-059736. And whereas, as required by Article 8 of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law, for the proposed unlisted action, the applicant completed and submitted Part 1 of the full environmental form dated June 29th, 2012. And whereas, a public hearing was held pursuant to chapter 194 of the Town of East Fiskil Code and pursuant to chapter 274A of the New York State Town Law, and said application of the East Fiskil, an application at the, East Fiskil Town Hall, 3:30, Route 376, Hopewell Junction, New York, on December 4th, 2012, at 7:30 PM, adjourned to other dates and closed on May 7th, 2013. And whereas, the public hearing notice for this application was published in the Southern Dutchess News, and whereas, the subject, public hearing notice was mailed to adjacent and across the street property owners within 500 feet, and the subject property was posted with a sign giving notice of the public hearing. And whereas, the subject application was referred to to the Town of East Fiskil Conservation Advisory Council, CAC, the Architectural Advisory Board, the Town Engineering Department, the Fire Advisory Board, the New York State Department of Transportation, and the Dutchess County Planning Board, and the town's traffic consultant. And whereas, the Town Architectural Advisory Board recommended approval of the building elevations, and whereas, based on the comments made by adjacent property owners at the public hearing, revisions to the site plan were made, including eliminating one building and relocating the driveway. And whereas, comments in response to referrals of the subject application were considered by the planning board, as well as written and verbal comments made in response to the subject application at the public hearing. And whereas, the planning board conducted a site inspection of the subject premises, and whereas, a negative declaration under section 617.7 of the SEACER regulations was adopted on an even date herewith. Now therefore, be it resolved that the planning board hereby issues final site plan approval for the above project as represented on a map entitled Paline Site Plan, prepared by PRG Engineering, PLLC, dated June 29th, 2012, and revised through May 30th, 2013. And, excuse me, be it further resolved that this approval is subject to the following conditions, which must be completed before the plan is signed by the planning board chair. One, modifications set forth in the town engineer's letter dated June 12th, 2013. Two, obtain the required signatures from the Department of Health, the approvals for sign-off of the town engineer, planner, and attorney, as well as the town consulting engineer, and submit, A, four prints to the Mylar of said drawing to the planning office following the chairman's signature on the site plan Mylar. B, submit as-built survey in AutoCAD file in digital format. Three, obtain verification from the receiver of taxes on appropriate form indicating that taxes on the subject property have been paid. Four, posting of a performance security pursuant to section 19427E of the Town Code in the amount of $20,000. Said security to be in effect for the period of not less than two years from the date thereof. Prior to the release of the signed site development plan by the planning board clerk, said security shall be submitted and approved by the town attorney, which will then be forwarded to the town clerk and a copy to the planning board clerk. Five, the applicant is advised that the conditions of this approval must be satisfied, and the site plan and drawing signed by the planning board chairman, and any required permits obtained prior to beginning any related work on the subject property. Six, submit lighting plan with photo metrics and add the same to the site plan to the satisfaction of the planning consultant. Seven, demarcation of wetlands buffer by boulder, fence landscaping, or other suitable material in the boundary of the wetlands buffer shall be set forth in the deed for the property or lots, if applicable. Eight, no processing or screening is allowed on this site. Nine, all equipment and vehicles used on the site will be equipped with silent.
It would be with collision activated backup alarms. I've just been corrected, it's not silent.
Okay.
They're silent, so they activate.
I don't know if that's the exact terminology, but they know what we're talking about, so it's something equivalent to that.
Okay.
And then the only thing as far as age, maybe be no material processing or screening on age.
Okay. Ten, all landscaping will be noted on the site plan and approved by the town planner. If any planting is placed on the adjacent town property, maintenance agreements will be entered into between the applicant and the town. Eleven, the standard stormwater maintenance agreement and easement will be signed and recorded. Twelve, any blocks or concrete used to separate bin areas will be textured and of a color approved by the Architectural Review Board. Thirteen, a dust control plan will be submitted and approved by the town engineer and must be utilized at all times. Fourteen, the subject site plan is shown to cover three separate lots. The lots will be formally combined into one lot prior to the signing of the site plan. Fifteen, all necessary DEC, Army Corps, and DOT permits, as required, must be in place prior to the signing of the site plan. Sixteen, all the terms and conditions of the negative declaration adopted herein must be complied with at all times. Seventeen, environmental monitor, environmental monitor escrow and site inspection fees as agreed to with the town engineer. Is there an eighteen?
There's a few things I just want to mention first. Tom, back on the first page, we're, we have in a couple places here, Architectural Advisory Board as opposed to Architectural Review Board. Are we okay to?
We'll clean up that name. This is the first time we're using the new one.
I see that, yes.
I noticed it too.
That's a lot of numbers.
So at the bottom of the first page and the top of the second page, we can put that on Architectural Review. In the, let's see, in the second whereas, on the top of the second page, I wanted to add in, we also added additional screening from the residences, screening and landscaping between the site and the residences.
Anything else?
Yes, on condition number five, we usually say the planning board chairman or other duly authorized agent or something along those lines?
The deputy.
Say it again.
The vice chairman or deputy can sign if I don't like this.
Okay, so we don't have to add that here, okay. All right. We just used to have that in the other ones. And then under thirteen, I think it should be, a dust control plan will be submitted to and approved by the town engineer, right? You don't create the plan, right?
No. I don't know. And the only other thing that shall be utilized is conditions warrant, and you wouldn't use it in the rain, for instance, or in the snow, so I mean, as conditions warrant.
Utilize when?
Or as determined by a town engineer, some to that effect.
I think when, when conditions warrant. Is there, do we need to say that something about monitoring, or is that?
That's the seventeen. Oh, I'm sorry.
This is the dust control. Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine. That's the normal code.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Should the, word, and number seventeen, should the word escrow be moved after site inspection fees? Do we escrow for both, or do we pay site inspection fees as we go?
We just put that in because it was an offset, it wasn't there, but we'll make it into a correct sentence.
Correct, we like correct statements.
What I'm asking is, are the site inspection fees also part of the escrow, or are they?
No.
Okay. Okay. That's all I had. Any other changes from board members?
No, I just have a question. On item nine, it says, "All equipment and vehicles used on the site will be equipped with whatever the correct wording is." What if a customer's picking up, and do they have to have the same kind of?
Customers, customers would not require to have that.
So they would have the standard beep, beep, beep on the back?
Customer?
Yeah, a customer.
Customer's not gonna have a backup alarm on their vehicle, a customer.
Coming with a pickup truck? To buy two yards or something?
No. No.
Okay. Because used includes, sound include, any vehicle that drives on the site.
I don't, I don't think there would be a way to mandate that no one can come on site if they don't have an alarm on the back of their vehicle.
I wouldn't either, that's why I thought when using the word used, not owned on the site. That's where I was going.
How about we put used regularly?
For all applicants' equipment and vehicles?
All applicants. Yeah, I just didn't think you wanted to exclude customers. Yeah.
Is that, okay. Did you have a concern, right?
I just.
No, 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 yeah. Thank you for that.
Other, other comments or changes from board members? Brendan, Michelle, Joe?
It's just on the tax grid number, I mean, the reason that seems so long is because they're trying to show all three parcels with that one number, so maybe if we just say grid numbers plural, and then you kind of know that it's like, it's, it's, yeah.
Oh, so the last three sets of digits are actually three separate parcels?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that, okay. Okay.
I thought it was all done just sort of like a fun reading it.
We want you to read it.
There you go.
Well, it's shortened, it's shortened by doing it that way, but it gets confusing without the commas.
And then, Tom, any other changes? Okay, so Mike, just go ahead and skip over, at least my page five is after page three, but page four is at the end.
Be it further resolved that the stormwater pollution prevention plan, the erosion control plan, all updated through May 20th, 2013, be and hereby are accepted and approved, and be it further resolved that the approval of said site development plan shall be valid for a period of 12 months, and the date of this resolution to satisfy all conditions of approval, and to obtain the signature of the planning board chairman on the site development plan. If there is no substantial change in the condition of the site and/or its environs, site development plan approval may be extended by the planning board for one additional year, additional period of one year upon timely application of this applicant, and a written explanation for the reason for the delay, which require the granting of a time extension. Anything else? Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Okay. Do I have a second for the resolution?
So moved.
A second from Russ, votes as follows. Jason?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Let's go.
It's okay, we're following along.
Michael?
Aye.
Bob?
No.
Okay, do you want to offer reason why for the minutes?
Yes, I, I know they're gonna try and keep down the noise, I know they're gonna try and keep down the dust. That was a nursery, which is a very quiet, nice blending in. There are a lot of residential houses right next door. I tried to put myself in their position. If I was living in one of those houses, would I want that kind of industry, even though it's zoned for it, right next door? And the answer is no, I would not.
Okay, thank you. John?
Aye.
Aye? Craig?
Aye.
Aye, and myself, aye. The motion carries. Thank you.
Very much.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is an adjourned public hearing for John J. Gas Station. Bear with us for a minute while we get ourselves situated, and we'll hopefully get the computer up and running. Hey, we have color again.
Wow.
All right. I didn't even notice. All right. Okay, folks, we're gonna go ahead and start now, so our mics will pick up audience noise.
We're here tonight for adjourned public hearing for the John J. Gas Station, located at 52 and Lake Drive, across from John J., adjacent to the Archway Plaza. Speak into the mic.
Just touch the mic once.
This project has been in front of the board.
Is that better?
For, this project has been in front of the board numerous times. I believe we submitted in August of last year to begin the discussion process on how to remediate this site and redevelop this site. Currently, the project is undergoing a remediation consent order from New York State DEC, which the applicant has begun.
Brian, I'm, I'm sorry, hold on one second. Can I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Aye. I apologize, I'm sorry.
Got it.
I'm sorry, Brian.
Yeah, so if you've been by the site, you've seen some of the progress that's been made. We run our consent order, as I said. The tanks had to be moved by a certain date, which has been done. The remediation process is going to be ongoing, it will be reinitiated in the, in the coming weeks. Getting back to the planning process, we've done several different layouts, variations, configurations, and in meeting with the town engineer and New York State DOT, and some of the concerns from the public and from the board, we've come up with an alternative to try to ease some of the traffic congestion that goes along with this development. The major realignment is the realignment of Lake Drive. Basically, what we're doing is a 50-foot right-of-way swap with the site. The Archway Plaza, as you can see, is highlighted in the upper corner there. What we'd like to do is to flip-flop the road, basically. Bring the road adjacent to the Archway Plaza, it'd be a new paved road, utilities would be transferred down that new corridor, in an effort to ease some of the traffic concerns that have been brought in this area due to the school that drops off at the peak hour in the morning, and specifically during the afternoon departure. Looking at the site, we're proposing a 3,000 square foot building to be a drive-through convenience store and coffee shop. Currently, we have two buildings on site. One is an existing car wash, which is in a state of disrepair, and then we have the existing convenience store, and we have three fueling stations located on the site right now. This proposal, we're showing four fueling stations, again, the 3,000 square foot building with a drive-through. In discussions with the board, drive-through operation for the donuts, specifically around the back, we've limited that to 11 o'clock at night. It's still gonna be a 24-hour operation.
Opening at what time?
24-hour operation. We're gonna limit the drive-through traffic to 11 PM at night.
Starting at what time?
I'm thinking 6 o'clock, 5:30, to beat the, the AM rush.
Yes, what, what he said was the, while the convenience store would be open 24 hours a day, the drive-through is proposed to be open from 5:30 or 6 AM through 11 PM, and close through the night. Brian, I don't know why, it's, we're just not picking up your, your voice that well on that mic.
Project has been in front of the ARB. We have a couple of renderings here that we've gone through previously with the board. In dealing with the comments from the last public hearing that we had, it revolved around traffic, and the way we left it was, we've done some additional analysis with Hudson Valley Engineering, the traffic consultant, and we reached out to DOT to get their input on the realignment of Lake Drive. And believe it or not, through some miracle, we actually got a response Friday of last week that said they were in favor of the realignment approach that we have proposed to them, subject to some additional details, obviously that go along with the site plan. But from a conceptual standpoint, the DOT was in favor of the realignment plan.
How does the realignment make it better? I wasn't here to last meeting, so I apologize, but.
I will let, I will let the traffic consultant handle that, and I'll also hand out a pamphlet that kind of goes through a summary table of the level of service that Brendan's developed.
And maybe before Brendan starts in, just so everyone's aware, this, this was not suggested by the applicant or proposed by the applicant, this was something that the town evaluated and proposed as part of this project to relocate Lake Drive, so it wasn't at the request of the applicant, but they're actually doing it at the request of. So it wasn't at the request of the applicant, but they're actually doing it at the request of the consultants.
Did anybody put in some thought to the timeframe it's going to take to do this realignment and the impact it's going to be on the neighborhood?
Yes, yes. So now we're just going to let the traffic consultant speak. But I just wanted to know that it was not initiated by the applicant.
Say it again?
All right, Jason, before I talk about just some of the benefits to traffic of realigning Lake Drive, what Brian has given you is just a table that outlines just a level of service analysis for the existing condition, a no-build condition, and then a build condition with Lake Drive in its existing location and Lake Drive in its realigned location. And just so you have an understanding of that, the existing analysis is just based on recent traffic counts in 2013. And as you can see from the data in the table, Lake Drive and 52 operate at a pretty decent level of service. And we looked at two critical movements, and those two critical movements for an unsignalized T-intersection of that type is the left turn onto the main road and then the left turn off of the main road onto Lake Drive. The left turn out in the existing condition operates at a level of service C, and then the left turn into Lake Drive, a level of service A. Then we looked at the no-build condition in 2014. And what was added into that for the traffic was some background growth, a 2% increase in traffic, and also the restoration of the gas station back to its previous use, which is a gas station, a convenience store, and a car wash. We looked at, and as you can see, the level of service declines somewhat mainly in the morning. And that goes from a C to a level of service of E. The thing that I want to point out, and this is what, to your question, Jason, what creates a big conflict out there with the left-turn traffic is John J. High School currently has an access driveway. You can't see it on this plan, right, Brian?
It's not on this plan.
Yep. Slightly offset from, across from Lake Drive. And the cars coming out of Lake Drive that make a left conflict with that. It's an entrance that's only used in the AM peak, but it does take a significant volume of cars. In the peak hour in the morning, when we counted, approximately 130 cars entered that driveway in the morning, and they would all potentially conflict with left turns coming out of Lake Drive. So that then, that's what leads to the build scenario with Lake Drive in its existing condition. One thing to note also is that we, in the AM peak, we looked at two different hours. We looked at the 7 to 8 hour, because that's when school is getting in, and that is actually the, you know, the peak amount of traffic in that area. But we also looked at the 8 to 9 hour, just to show what the level of service would be like after school is in, because all of that happens in a pretty brief chaotic time period of about a half hour from 6:45 to 7:15 during the school year.
What's the big increase between 2013 and 2014?
Well, the increases are just a 2% background growth, so a 2% increase in traffic.
So the 7 to 8 a.m. for 2013 existing?
Wait, 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 let Brendan finish, because I think, wasn't it also that you were restoring?
And then we were restoring the gas station back to its previous use. Not the way it is today, but, you know, back to its restored use of a gas station, a convenience store, and a car wash, not expanding it. The same number of pumps and fueling stations, the same number of car wash bays, and then the same, it's a gas station with a convenience store as opposed to a convenience store with a gas station.
The as-of-right use, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jason.
So just by the gas station, going back to its existing use, it goes from a C to an F?
A C to an E.
No, I'm talking about the 2013 existing and 2014 build existing Lake Drive.
The 2014 build actually then adds in the traffic from the new proposed development. So the traffic from increased fueling positions for the proposed gas station and then the Dunkin' Donuts and the drive-through.
So the gas station will produce more traffic than the school?
No.
At the peak hour? I'm looking at 2013 existing, 7 to 8 a.m., which is 23.5 C.
Okay.
Then I'm looking at 2014 build existing Lake Drive aligning, F, 162.8.
Okay.
Does that mean the gas station is going to be producing that much more than what's there today?
It's going to be producing more, actually, it's not that it's actually producing a significant increase amount of new generated traffic. It's just that more traffic is, that traffic is going to be entering the gas station and exiting on Lake Drive. So it creates more traffic from 52 on to Lake Drive.
But I think the comparison you want to look at is, if you just restored the gas station, it goes from a C to an E, and this development brings it down from an E to an F.
Folks, we're going to call for public comment after we finish this initial discussion, so bear with us and then we'll have you come up for public comment.
So it's C to an E and then further reduced to an F if they do the drive-through and everything.
And then understand that it's...
But by moving Lake Drive closer to the John J. Main Entrance, is it not going to affect any of that traffic?
Well, the critical movement is the left-hand turn out. And, you know, what it does do is that now the left-hand turns coming out of Lake Drive no longer have that conflict with the right turns that are going into that AM entrance into John J. High School.
Where they're queuing up past Lake Drive.
You can't see it on Brian's map, but just to the bottom part. So, you know, it removes a conflict of, you know, approximately 130 cars. So that, you know, that's why it's significant.
Folks in the audience, I'm sorry, we can hear you talking, so we just ask if you could just hold that down. Our mics are picking up your discussions. Okay, just bear with us and we'll get to your questions and public comment shortly.
So, Brian, where I wanted to go was, the as-of-right use, the no-build that you're talking about, that could be, that same footprint could be converted, like, for example, what is currently car wash, could be converted to convenience store, correct?
That I'm not sure of. I mean, that might be a question for Tom, but what we analyzed was restoring it back to its previous use of a gas station with the same number of fueling positions, convenience store, and a car wash.
In other words, the convenience store would be the same size that it is now, you would not...
Right, I understand that, but I'm not, I'm just asking. The as-of-right use is based on the foot...
What was there, what's there now reactivated is the appropriate use of that stuff.
Okay, but with the square footage...
Or the car wash and the store and the...
What I'm really asking is, could the store be extended by the square footage of the car wash?
It's in a V1 zone, so you have to do a calculation based on...
But that's the build scenario, basically.
Yeah.
That's the build scenario.
The car wash has gotten rid of and the store is made larger.
That's the build scenario.
Yes.
But, again, there's, the as-of-right use versus no-build versus what's proposed.
What I don't understand is, and believe me, I'm all for this project, I'd like to see this happen, but what I don't understand is, if he just opens up the gas station and the car wash, it's not going to generate anywhere near what the traffic, what this new convenience mart is going to...
It's significant, it's less.
I know, it's less. I just don't understand why.
Why it's less?
Because you still have a gas station, you still have a smaller convenience mart, and you have a car wash.
Right.
You have additional services.
The...
Opposed to just having just the convenience mart.
Well, it's a convenience mart plus a Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through.
Okay, so it's just a Dunkin' Donuts, that's going to drive all of this traffic?
And they're increasing the number of fueling positions.
Yes.
By one.
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 Well, by two.
By two.
By two.
No, there's six there now.
And they're increasing it to eight.
With the as...
Hold on. I don't understand how so much more traffic is generated...
And the other thing, looking at the AM, the car wash doesn't generate a significant amount of traffic, and it's all pushed to the PM. It doesn't really generate any AM traffic.
And where I'm getting at with this, I just, I don't see how, you know, you guys have your calculations.
If you go to the...
I really like to see when it's finally built, if it does get built, if this really...
Let me add this too. We didn't just use, you know, out of the IT manual, we didn't just use those straight numbers. We actually, since there's a Dunkin' Donuts in the plaza next door, we actually counted some traffic in the morning to see how many people actually came to that Dunkin' Donuts. We also counted traffic at a facility on Knoxon Road, which is, it's bigger, but it's a similar facility, a gas station with a Dunkin' Donuts and a drive-through. We counted traffic there also during an AM and a PM peak, just to compare...
Again, folks in the audience, I'm sorry, our mics are picking up your conversations. I need to ask you to just bear with us, we will get to public comment. We're just, we're picking up a lot of feedback from... Sorry, Brendan.
So we try, you know, we tried to take a very realistic approach of that generated traffic.
Okay, so the plaza next door is generating how much traffic? Do we have calculations on that?
Yeah, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we have, I mean, we have some peak hour...
Because there's more stores in there.
Oh, actually, we were just relating to looking at how much traffic came to the Dunkin' Donuts.
So how do you do that? Do you have somebody watching?
Who walked in the door of the Dunkin' Donuts.
Right, yes.
It seems to me that the as-build condition, if you put a car wash back in there, you have the smaller convenience store, and you don't have the drive-through, hence you don't have the Dunkin' Donuts. It really cuts down the amount of traffic dramatically, and I'm not sure the numbers reflect that.
They definitely, I mean, we can take a look at the report, but there is an absolute difference. I mean, it's probably in the magnitude of, you know, 40 to 60 cars for the as-of-right use and 90 to 100, 100 or a little over 100 cars for the new proposed condition.
I think without the drive-through, the traffic would drop rather dramatically in and out of the site.
Depending on...
Especially early in the morning, I mean, nobody's going to be going to wash their car at 5:30, 6 o'clock.
True.
And then Brendan, the last set of numbers is if, with the realignment of Lake Drive?
With the realignment, where you would remove that conflict from the entrance to John J. The DOT, their conceptual approval is also to have one full access driveway onto 52, which you can see from Brian's drawing, is to the west of the site. That does allow for some distribution of the traffic, so that all the traffic does not have to exit through Lake Drive. The people that go through the drive-through can exit the entrance onto 52. So that, just to sum up, Jason, sort of the, you know, what we see is the benefits of the realignment, and what drove us to look at it was that it removes that conflict from the John J. Entrance. It does provide some slight enhancement of the distribution of traffic onto 52. And then it just, in the long term, it does provide some, like, increased feasibility of making further improvements there. You know, right now, the West Campus is obviously empty, so, you know, as that gets developed, I mean, more traffic is going to be in this corridor. So this allows even more of, you know, a better potential improvement at the John J. High School somewhere in the future, or even potential signalization of, you know, Lake Drive and 52, somewhere down the line.
That's given the fact that you put the drive-through and increased the size of the store. The applicant, I know way back, I'm probably going to guess six months ago, made a comment that if he couldn't get the drive-through, he would proactively, instead of having the car wash, make it a garage. Now, if you put a garage there and a small convenience store with the number of pumps we have now, I don't think moving Lake Drive makes any difference in the traffic flow. It just wouldn't seem to me that it would.
But you got to just keep in mind, if we don't take this opportunity now to shift Lake Drive, Lake Drive will never have a traffic signal, okay? By doing this, we were keeping our options open. We've spoke to the school, and if we can work with them, as Brendan said, in the future, we do have the potential to get a signal at this new location, along with pedestrian crosswalks, which we don't have there right now. Because you all know regardless, the kids walk across the street.
And they don't go to stop.
And it's not safe.
And they don't go to signals.
At least it keeps the door open to a future improvement. Whereas if we don't flip Lake Drive, that's out the window.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm hearing people talking in the audience, it's very hard for us to hear what's happening up here.
And also, like, the applicant's going to incur a considerable amount of additional expense in doing this, but he is willing to do that.
That's where I was going.
Looking at the big picture here.
There was an article in the paper today about Livono, building on the West, what used to be the West Complex, which means that traffic light would go back into, then you'd have that one, the possibility of the new one at Lake Drive, and the one at Taylor Road, and it's like, traffic light, you know, I can see they're just backing up forever. I'm not sure that having a traffic light on Lake Drive is a good idea.
Well, that was my, there is a traffic light that will be going in?
Not at this juncture, no.
Down the road.
And it doesn't make sense to have a traffic light across from the John J.?
Well...
They don't actually align up right now.
I'm just looking.
Yeah.
The issue is the student parking. Because basically, you can't have the driveway cut off between the school and the student parking. You can't have students crossing.
No, I get that.
So basically, that would have to be redone.
Well, what we're looking at is potentially, is connecting the student parking lot to this intersection and separating the two entrances, so that the students would come in with a full signalized entrance here. Because now we understand if students go up, they do U-turns and all this kind of stuff, so...
That really doesn't, I'm just looking at just the satellite view, it really doesn't line up across from that entrance? Doesn't conflict there at all? How do we talk this conflict with the student entrance? Are you going to let it stop? This is that Roeful Drive, is that what we're talking about?
No.
No, all right, I'm...
No, you're on the other one.
I'm on the wrong one. Okay, all right, I'm sorry. So this will line it up better?
This will line it up with the parking lot, so that there could be the potential for a future connection there.
Okay, well, that one makes sense.
And I think the other element, we're looking to potentially connect Archway Plaza out in the future.
Well, that would make, yeah, with the road in the middle would make more sense. I mean, I don't have an issue with it, I just want to understand it, because it would be...
And Scott, was there any benefit or difference with the ability to bring water into the neighborhood?
Well, it gives us a cleaner location to bring the water across. At the current location of Lake Drive, there's a septic field for the medical building, right where we'd have to put our jacket bits.
Okay.
So we do have a conflict there. This helps resolve that.
But that's just for, that's just a construction issue, not an ongoing, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Brian, at the last meeting, we had some discussion around the condition of the site. Have you gotten the site cleaned up? Do you have the soil covered? Where are we with that?
We're working with the applicant, we've addressed some of the concerns that we had with him, and we are going to be out to the site to clean it up, as we discussed. It will happen.
That was a month ago.
I thought some of that had already happened.
There was a fence put up around the dirt, too.
It started.
I would hate to use that month of cleanup as a measure of how this is going to proceed.
So, here's another question. The plaza next door is going to lose, are they going to lose part of their entrance? Or is that what I'm seeing right here, it's going to go into the...
The medical plaza?
Yeah, the medical.
Their driveway would be extended out to, just like it is now.
There'd be an easement for that.
Brendan, anything else with traffic or site circulation here we should cover before we...
The only thing, as Brian said, DOT has given their conceptual approval of his plan. They did ask that, since we did do some subsequent studies in terms of collecting additional data, getting some additional traffic or additional accident data and doing some additional analysis, they did ask us to compile that all into the traffic impact study, because we submitted an original one and then supplemented it. So they wanted us to package that all together. And then we, they did also ask us to rerun the truck-turning templates to just demonstrate that that all functions properly.
Okay. Brian, just where on the plan now do we have the parking for the trucks and the circulation? What's the intended circulation there?
Circulation is around the building, exiting toward 52.
Even for fuel delivery?
And for fuel delivery, what we did is, access lane is going to be also the fuel delivery lane and also delivery for the convenience store. So we have temporary parking actually in the escape lane for delivery off peak hours. And then you'll see fuel delivery is almost right near the exit out to 52. So the truck controller would actually pull in Lake, enter the back of the site, head out toward the front of the site, unload at the front of the site.
Okay. And then right back out onto 52?
Right back out onto 52. And what we've tried to do, we've put notation on the plan, and the applicant does control the deliveries, is try to do off-peak hours as best we can.
And there's enough space for the truck to be there and the drive-through is still operational? Or does that stop the drive-through for the period of time the truck's there?
The drive-through is still operational, we do have two 12-foot lanes.
Okay.
And it's positioned far enough down at the swing of the truck controller, doesn't impede the drive-through lane.
Does the site get smaller or bigger?
It's actually almost a complete swap.
Is it?
Just a comment. If I'm one of the people who lives in the community behind the gas station, it gets me water, if I'm looking at it from their point of view, it gets me water from the other side of 52 across, but does not hook it up to the houses. That's something to be done in the future. Someone has to pay for that, and that's a big bill. It looks like it doesn't ease the traffic, it just makes it a little worse. So if I'm a resident in the back, and that's the primary impact of it's going to be, it does nothing for me except get water across, which I can't get to because something else has to be done, and it makes my traffic situation worse.
I think it goes a little further than that. I think it's, we've been promised, residents have been promised water for an... water for an awful long time.
Yes.
They've been promised cleanup an awful long time.
Yes.
What this does, it's, it's, it's Kickstartering that. The applicant is still committed to bring the water across, he has, he has the means to do it, he has the drive-through. Two, it also sets up bigger picture, a footprint of development of the corridor, and providing traffic mitigation for the entire corridor. We do have a big research facility there that's not being used, it will be coming back online sometime soon. It would be nice if we could somehow tie a future development in for the whole corridor while we have the opportunity, and I think that's the forward thinking that we're using to this approach.
And Bob, I would, talking back to the point, it also starts the cleanup, right?
Well, the cleanup started a month ago, it hasn't progressed too far.
Well, it's, yeah, but it gets there, all right?
Okay.
No, but it has progressed.
It has progressed.
Yeah, I do, too, I mean, Tom, there's been a lot of effort to clean that up. You're talking about the cleanup and turning the dirt. We're talking about the cleanup of the...
Well, the dirt has to air, that's part of the process.
And just, just to clarify, if the applicant bringing the water to hit the rear of his property line, from a liability standpoint, that's all he is being allowed to do. Bring it to the back of his property line, that's what he's agreed to, liability-wise, that's all he can do, just to make that clear.
But across the road, under fifty-two, across the road, up past, regardless of where Lake Road is?
Regardless.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Michelle, anything from your end before we open for public comment?
I have some more questions.
Okay, I'll come in. Joe, anything before public comment?
No, I don't think so.
Scott?
Just back to the water, right now, we're, we're working with the town of Fishkill to actually get more water, because right now, Board of Health has put us on a cap of the amount of water we can take from Fishkill, but we are working on that right now, and the town of Fishkill is working on that, so, I know we're talking about bringing water across the street, but, but right now, we're still waiting on Board of Health to approve Fishkill supplying more water. We have a contract amount that covers the quantity that we need, it's just physically getting sufficient water, so...
Okay.
That's up in the air right now.
Does that mean plan improvements for the site in Fishkill to pump more?
I just received last week their, their engineer's report that I'm, that I'm going through, they, they have like a phased approach to some modifications.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what the capital improvements are gonna cost in the Fishkill area, that we have to wait for pumping up water?
Well...
Just, just to get a timeline.
We'll probably be discussing this in the next couple of weeks with Board of Health.
Fair enough.
You know, how, how they're gonna approach this, so, I think they're trying to do it phased, to get the water to us now, and then make some improvements in the near future, so...
Fair enough.
And then, Tom, I know if we realign this, there's, there's the swap of the property, the...
DEC will sign off on it.
Okay, so, do we...
And also, we should be in Albany in the next three weeks to meet with DEC and the Attorney General's office about the New York State, if you will, Superfund Fund, to talk to them about what is supplied beyond here.
Actually bringing the water further back.
So in about three weeks, we'll have a better handle as to what the state's gonna be willing to do.
Okay, good. Jason, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, go ahead.
Does the town carry in the expense of the realignment? Or is this all on the applicant?
We haven't finalized the design, but I mean, anything that's on their property is at their expense. I don't know if there's gonna be anything off-site that we're gonna have to do at times.
You're talking about the realignment of the road?
Yeah.
Are they paying for it all?
Yes, anything on their site is on their dime, yeah.
Okay. That's including the road?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, that's not on their site?
No, but...
The new Lake Drive is not their site, but that's a big part of it.
What's, what's proposed to go, what's currently their site, yes.
Okay.
Once you get off their current property line, if there's any traffic you can do, we'll work that out, yeah.
And you're comfortable with that, Brian, that's understood?
Applicant, applicant is committed.
Okay. Other questions or comments from board members? Okay. What we'd like to do now is open up for public comment, so we have a sign-in clipboard here, I'd just ask you, come on up, sign in on the clipboard, and we'll call you up in the order that you sign in. So whoever signs the clipboard first, you can come right up to the podium, but I do ask that you sign the clipboard for us before you do that. Okay?
We're Alamo, we're Codenelli, we live at eight Lake Drive.
Okay.
And we're, we're the first house coming into Lake Drive, so this realignment is really no good for us, due to the traffic coming and going into Lake Drive and Birch Drive. And the, the second thing is this Dunkin' Donuts, even though it's closing at eleven o'clock, the drive-through, it's still gonna be open. It's a twenty-four hour store, and there's a number of deliveries that happen like two, three o'clock in the morning. And that's been waking us up, because we live behind Archway Plaza. You must have got a number of...
Oh, deliveries at Archway, you mean?
Yeah, so we live behind there.
Okay.
So there's like a number of complaints that I sent to the town, and this has been a problem, and this is gonna be a problem, too.
Okay.
The other thing, can, can the tractor trailers make a turnaround?
Yes, that's one of the things we review on the site plan to make sure that that can happen. They may not actually turn three hundred and sixty degrees, but they have to be able to navigate on existing roads without jumping curbs into the site and out of the site, without...
What's happening now, as my husband said, we live, I'm Margaret, we live right behind Archway Plaza, we're the very first house.
Okay.
And I think the front of our property may have but a little bit with, with this new development here.
Okay.
And what's happening is, we went through all the meetings when they were putting up Archway Plaza, and, you know, they were assuring us, you know, that the turnaround would be fine in the back. Now, we see, when we're in our backyard or on our back porch, we see these huge tractor-trailer trucks navigating through the skinny little lane, and, you know, they are very, very threatening when they're coming through, I mean, if this guy loses control, he's right in our yard. So, that's still an ongoing situation, and, again, as my husband said, the noise, you know, we've been fighting with the town, fighting with noise ordinances and, and such, trying to get the, the deliveries to be at a decent hour. A lot of things are promised when these developments go in, but then, once you start getting into the day-to-day business, you know, things have a way of morphing into something else. Just the other morning, I was woken up at four o'clock with the Dunkin' Donut truck making its delivery. So I, I get up at five twenty to go to work, so, you know, that really interrupted my sleep. Looking at this, I'm just wondering, is, is our house anywhere on there? I see a little square up there, I don't know if that is our house.
Is your house directly behind Archway?
Huh?
Yeah, directly behind.
Yeah, we're, we're directly, directly behind there. I'm looking at the new Lake Drive, you know, arrows going in, how do we get to our house?
Yeah, Brian, do you have a, showing how it's gonna connect the...
Same way you do now.
No, I, I'm going in the regular Lake Drive, how do I go, how do I get to my house with this?
You'll turn in Lake Drive, and it'll bring you right to your house.
Right.
Lake Drive right here, currently? Is this Lake Drive?
Well, Lake Drive, this comes, comes down to fifty-two. So this is gonna be all closed up.
There's gonna be a transition.
I would come in like, you know, by Archway Plaza instead, and then where that curve now exists, so I would be coming, I would be coming into Lake Drive, and there's, there's kind of like a blind, they call it like a blind curve, you know, every time we come into our development, we really have to slow down, and really like peek and see if there's anybody coming in around. So now, when you have this new Lake Drive, when we're coming down it, we're going to be making a right into what is now the blind curve.
Okay.
If you leave me in right there, if we can, if we can talk to Scott, and you get on the site.
Right.
Well, I, I think, I don't know, we're gonna be closing tonight, but we'll make sure we expand this for the next meeting, and show those curves.
Well, Lake Drive be one-way or two-way?
Two-way.
It'll be exactly as it is today, it'll just be in a slightly different location.
Straight left-hand turn, sure, right-hand turn is...
Ma'am, and I'm, I'm sorry, did you sign in on the clipboard? Okay, we'll, we'll call you.
Okay, so now, when, when the truck comes to make his delivery to the donut shop, or the convenience store, he's gonna be coming in the new Lake Drive.
Coming in...
The new Lake Drive.
Coming this way, waiting for you.
Right next to your...
Right, not even close.
Where's, where's the donut shop?
So usually, the delivery's in the back.
The delivery in the back.
Back of Archway, right.
For, for, that's, that's at Archway, for, for this design, because of the shape of the site, the delivery's probably from the side of the property.
Well, a lot of problems get talked about, but once you know...
We'll make sure that Brian makes it clear, and we'll put it, we'll make sure that it's on the plan.
Yeah, you know, once these things, you know, start doing business...
So I'm sorry, are these trucks, are these trucks gonna be closer to your house than Archway? I'm confused.
No. They should be further away.
They should be better.
Further away.
Well, initially we thought that, you know, but, you know, when, when, you know, these delivery guys come two, three, four o'clock in the morning, you know, they're, they're just workers, you know, they're, you know, they're not worried about being quiet. Those trucks are very noisy, and we are very, very close. If you're standing in, you know, where the old scrub-a-dub is, scrubbed-up car wash, you know that? You can, you can see our house, like, it's right there. So we're there sleeping, and, you know, these guys are like banging down their, 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 their trucks.
It's a, it's a ten-ton truck with a metal flip gate.
Yeah.
That bangs on the ground, and when they close it, again, you know...
Just, just to let, just to let the board know, too, we, we have observed, you know, the deliveries at Archway Plaza, and the big tractor-trailers that come in to do make deliveries, and basically, they navigate around the back, to the back of the plaza, and then maneuver their truck to be able to turn around, and then come back along the side of Archway, and usually, that's where they're making their deliveries.
Yeah, there's ones that come Tuesday and Friday, and the fellow that comes Tuesday, he does, he goes by the metal gate, and I get all the fumes.
And the fumes, too, you know, so, you know, we, we could be sitting in our front yard, you know, we have a deck in the front, too, so, you know, that is gonna impact, you know, our quality of using our property. So it's, it's a really big issue. I mean, we don't wanna see anybody not have the opportunity to, you know, to conduct their business, but we would like to be considered, you know, big time.
Can you show where the truck is gonna be making the delivery? Stopping and...
Yeah, Jason, just...
This should actually improve your situation, because taking trucks behind Archway, now we're moving more toward the medical building? So the delivery's gonna be right, right here on that exit lane, right there.
They're, they're still gonna have to swing around the back.
They're still gonna swing, but they're not gonna load back there, so you may hear them pulled in and around, but you're, think about, when they deliver, the trucks will be pulled up, the engine's gonna be in front of them, so the building may actually kind of suffer some of the noise from them making those deliveries, because that, that, that building will actually be between the houses.
And, can I ask a question? I mean, if you opened up the back of Archway, out onto Lake Drive, as was mentioned as a possibility, wouldn't that, you were saying they, they, they have to position themselves back and forth?
Well, the, the problem where they're coming in, it's not closest to this new, new building, it's way on the other side of like, you know, where the deli button is there.
Right, but if they were allowed to just drive through straight and behind, and not have to make that turn around to come back around the building to get out of Archway...
How would they get into Archway?
They would go in the same way they do today, but what I'm saying is, if it was adjoining to Lake Drive in the back, they wouldn't have to make all those turns to get out the back.
But just to be clear, that, that connection with Archway is not part of this application.
It's not part of this application.
It's just a potential consequence of the application.
This new Lake Drive wouldn't help that, because when the people have to go in the back of Archway Plaza, they're going on the far east side of Archway Plaza, is where the very, very narrow drive-through is for the trucks to get back there, that's where that is, the very far east of Archway Plaza. This building, this new building is to the west of Archway Plaza.
I believe overtures were made to Archway, too, to connect for in and out, and they were refused, or turned down.
Refused.
Right, but I think it's, at, at that time, we weren't, at that time, we weren't contemplating moving Lake Drive, so now, as opposed to having Archway come through in another commercial site, it potentially has side, roads frontage on Lake Drive, on the revised Lake Drive, if that's what we move forward with.
If, yes, if they wanna connect.
If they wanna connect, they're not required to, and it's not part of this application, but it's definitely a potential.
Yeah, but I'm not sure how that would help the far east end. If you ever go back, if you ever, no, if you ever go back on the far east end of Archway Plaza, in the back, it's a tiny little, tiny little driveway, so I don't know if you're trying to eliminate that driveway.
This is what they're talking, this is where they deliver here, the house is sitting here, there's that parking lot here, on the way out here.
This is where they, there's a skinny, skinny little driveway.
What they're talking about is this new realignment affords Archway the possibility of entering new Lake Drive, so they just make it out this way.
Yeah, but they're still having to come out of that.
They, they, excuse me, they don't even like come that way, because the, the trucks can't make it. They hit the building.
They hit the building.
They only go in one way. This was designed to be a one-way in and out, but the tractor-trailers are too big. They go in...
Again, I, I appreciate what you're saying about Archway, I just wanna, I wanna focus on this plan and what's...
Okay, thank you.
But I, what I'm hearing from you is, we have issues potentially with late-night deliveries and trying to limit that from happening.
Right, yeah.
I shouldn't say late night, middle-of-the-night deliveries, site distance, potentially with your driveway and the new, new layout of Lake Drive, if that moves forward, making sure there's landscaping or screening for your house as much as possible as they realign Lake Drive, if there's a way to put some additional screening or something for you. Again, site distance may, we'll have to find the right balance for that. And then the location of exactly where deliveries would be made within the building, so are they gonna be coming around the back of the building, or are they coming to the side of the building?
Yes.
Did I capture everything, or was...
I think, yes.
Are, are you sure?
I mean, I have other concerns, but I'm, I'm sure the other folks are gonna address them as well.
Okay, all right, well, you can come back up if you think of something else as well.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Hello there.
Hi.
I'm Debbie Skinnell, I live at sixteen Birch Drive, which is the very first road in, into the development, where I have lived now for forty-seven years. The Lake City Development, as we finally know it, living there, is a very old development, very well-established, lots of families, ages from A to, I won't insult anybody. I have a couple of quick questions based on the stuff that's entered, entered here, and then a couple of things to say.
Okay.
Lake Drive will be two-way, am I correct?
Yes.
Coming out of the Lake City Development, will you be able to make a left-hand turn onto Route fifty-two?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, okay. And a right-hand turn on fifty-two. There'll be no restrictions?
Correct.
Okay. Um, will...
There aren't restrictions today, right?
No, but I had heard there might be, so that's why I'm clarifying.
Yep, no, that's fine.
Hear, say information that I want, clear before I make any statements.
Okay.
Um, is there any plan of using the traffic being diverted through the development itself?
No.
Okay. Um, one of the things that I need to tell you a little bit about my development, because I've lived there as long as I did, is that, first of all, the roads in and of themselves are barely two lanes. There is no side on, on the roads, nor is there any sidewalks. The development is walked on a very regular basis. Every morning, um, the kids are going to and from John Jay. During the day, the kids are wandering around in the development from John Jay. We won't say that they're skipping or anything, but we've all been there and understand that completely. Um, during the day...
I'm shocked, I'm just shocked.
Shocked, aren't you? Just terribly shocked that they might be doing that. Um, the bottom line is, is that families walk on those streets all the time. Their kids, they ride, they learn to ride their tricycles on the bike on the roads. We play on the roads because the roads are nice and quiet. Families walk their dogs. The other thing that I need to tell you is the track team, for example, because the development is as quiet as it is, from John Jay runs every day in our development because it is a safe, low-traffic environment. The other big thing is my, my section of Birch Drive, Birch Drive is an oval, for those of you that may or may not know it, but the front half has six houses on it, and no insult, some of the residents are here. Five of those six houses are inhabited by significantly elderly people that also walk on the street and can't get out of the way quickly. So, without shoulders on the roads, without sidewalks, with the fact that people occupy those streets so much, I'm highly concerned that we may potentially have an increase in traffic within our development and a highly dangerous situation with the pedestrians that are on the streets. And so, that is my biggest concern that I have. Noise is an issue, obviously. I get the misfortune of living, living directly behind the, what was bridging steel, not sure what it's called these days, when they get their deliveries also at three o'clock in the morning, crash, bang, boom. I've lived with that. I'm not gonna complain about that, but my biggest concern is the potential of increased traffic and the dangers, danger to the pedestrians that exist within that development.
Okay. Brendan, can you...
No, it's, go ahead.
Brendan, can you just, in, in our traffic study, I know you analyze the directions that traffic goes. Do you see an increase going back into the development? I'm sure there must be, you know...
Yeah, it's not, I mean, it's, it's not prohibited, obviously, but, uh, you know, we'd looked at it as being a diversion, and if, you know, if you're gonna take a right-hand turn onto fifty-two, you know, that's a pretty free-flowing movement, so it really wouldn't make sense to go back into the development and up to Raffle Drive and then make a right-hand turn on fifty-two, because it's easy enough to get at, at this development, at Archway, at Lake Drive. Um, and then, you know, to be in it, what we looked at is, in terms of being in an attractive diversion, is would it save you time? And since currently, there really isn't a lot of traffic generated on fifty-two between Raffle Drive and Lake Drive, you know, going back into the neighborhood and back up to Raffle Drive to make a left-hand turn onto fifty-two really wouldn't save you any time. It would really, it, it might actually take you longer. So, you know, it, it just doesn't make sense, fall out as an appealing, you know, diversion, so.
Anyway, that's just, you know, as I say, one of my highest concerns with this.
But, but the students are getting back to your development, suppose, I'm assuming by crossing fifty-two, so...
By crossing fifty-two, which is gonna have an increased volume of traffic because of what we're offering. I mean, the kids, crosswalk? Come on, what's a crosswalk? I mean, they're, even now, they're crossing across, uh, Route fifty-two, you know, jumping here, there, and the other place. Um, and so, um, I have a lot of concern because it is such, the kids hang in the development. I mean, they live in the development, they hang in the development, they hide in the development, whatever the case may be. We've had them, police caught them behind our shed on our property smoking marijuana one day. I mean, so, um, but I am concerned, I am, I do have pedestrian concerns.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Robert, I'm sorry, I didn't catch... Hi.
I'm Bob Falcone, forty-seven McEwen Terrace, okay? I've lived here twenty-something years, and, uh, I have a couple of issues here, a lot which were mentioned by this lady before me. Um, first of all, the numbers that you take on traffic, what year was them numbers taken?
That's this year.
To count?
Yes, yes, we took, uh, we took peak hour manual turning track.
What year?
Uh, this year.
Yeah, but there was no gas being pumped the past year and a half.
Right.
When there's gas pumped there, that is like a hornet's nest, this corner. They, the cars come in from every which angle. They come from Lake Road, they come from fifty-two this way, they come from across the street to school, and they come from the other side of fifty-two. All right, it's like a hornet's nest, and they just come flying in because they wanna get their gas and get the hell out and do their job. Okay? And then you got trucks that come in. Trucks trailing, lawn mowing equipment, trucks, tractor-trailers coming in. People wanna play a number with a tractor-trailer, parks his trailer right there, and gets out and goes and plays his number. In the meantime, you got cars waiting to get gas, sitting on the road, on Lake Road, on fifty-two, and they're waiting to get into the gas station. So, them numbers that you have, that you guys took this year, throw 'em away, because when that gas is pumping, that place, because I know I worked for an environmental concern a few years, we used to pour in the gas there. You have to wait ten minutes to get gas. The cars are lined up, and this is not just at six in the morning. People come in, they play their numbers, it's a big number hole. People come in, they, they go in, they're, they're playing their numbers, they leave the car parked there, they leave the car running, the fumes are going. Nobody does nothing. It's a friendly environment. It's a great neighborhood, but the pollution goes, it stinks. You got people coming now, from what I understand, you're gonna have coming out of the medical facility and in and out. You're gonna have behind the Dunkin' Donuts and in and out. You're gonna have the tractor-trail coming in off fifty-two in and out, and now you have all the cars coming out of the gas station, all within three hundred feet.
Sir, 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 I'm just gonna ask, please, we, we can hear you, we just...
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I'm Italian.
(laughing)
You have about a three or four hundred, you have about a three or four hundred-foot section that has cars coming every which way of this fifty to this Lake Road.
Okay.
Okay? You got 'em coming out of the medical facility, you got 'em coming out of the, the station, as I understand. You got coming this way from fifty-two, and you got the blind curve from Al's House. I can't tell you how many times I almost got hit walking my dog on that road, 'cause there's no sidewalks. So, where do you walk? You walk your dog like this, you know? There's, there's, there's no place to walk. Now, the kids come out of school, all different angles. They go across the gas station, they come from behind Archway Plaza, they climb the fences, they come from under the trees. The kids go down Lake Road, they do what they gotta do, but that's a hangout, you all know it, and one day, a kid's gonna get killed. And I'm gonna tell you that now, 'cause if you put this through, I guarantee you, somewhere down the line, some kid's gonna get hit by the cars flying in and out of that place, 'cause people don't look. They get their coffee, they're looking to put it in the cup, and they drive. And they're gonna hit a kid that comes in and out of that street. A lot of kids, you never took a foot count of the kids, but if you go there, you'll see they don't cross the crosswalk. I think they do it on purpose, just to go out from the crosswalk. And I'm really concerned about the kids. Now, pollution, you're gonna put a, uh, drive-through, cars wait, they sit, they're waiting for the coffee. It's winter time, engines are running, the air stinks, pour around. Does town care? They don't live there. They don't care. That the people in the back there, they gotta smell these fumes, would you care if you lived there? I think you would. And you can't tell me that Dunkin' Donuts don't have lines like Mickey D's. Them cars are lined up all day long. Now, we have Dunkin' Donuts already. Why do you need a drive-through? There's one there, people get in, they shut the car off, they get out, and they go in to get their coffee, and the car doesn't run. The fumes are not coming out. My bad wolf. All right?
Okay, folks.
So, we have a Dunkin' Donuts that works, and it's twenty-four hours. You could go anytime, day or night, you'll see cars pouring from IBM, four o'clock in the morning, come out, boom, boom, go in, shut the car off, go in, get their coffee, sit around, boom, leave, start the car up and leave. You put a drive-through there, them cars are running day and night. And I particularly, I don't like fumes from cars, even though I'm a block or two away. You could smell diesel fumes when trucks are pouring up, and they're waiting for their coffee. It stinks, okay? So, do, do we need a drive-through? I don't think so. And they were saying that there were six pumps. I believe there's four pumps at their gas station.
There...
There's four.
There's, there's...
Not six.
Four fueling positions.
Two pumps, two islands, right? It's four.
Actually, three pumps, when you count the diesel pump. The diesel pump's so close to the gas pump, you really couldn't use both of them at the same time.
All right, so you're gonna be pumping diesel, so which means trucks.
Diesel pump there right now.
And maybe know how long it takes to, to fill up a tractor-trailer. It's not like a car, you stay there a minute, a minute and a half. These guys come in and they load up hundreds of gallons of, of fuel, with their engines running. More pollution. Okay? These are just some of the things I'm concerned about. Things are working good now. You wanna put a new building, put a new building. Wanna put new pumps, put new pumps. That's fine. What's wrong with things that work good? Why do you gotta change it? Someone's gotta care about us people in the back, back there. I mean, it's terrible, and the traffic's gonna be all over the place. And one other thing, you did remediation, why's the, why is the dirt still there?
It's been there for months, that contaminated soil.
That's part, sir, that's part of the remediation. You have to aerate the soil.
I understand how it works, because I did some of that work, okay? But it doesn't have to be there that long. They keep a top, the top blows, they come back, they put another top. I mean, it's been there since before the winter. That's contaminated soil, and I know you say needs air, but the bottom doesn't get it purified by air, just the top. Okay? Get that soil out of there. You see how fast they move with this remediation? You can imagine what they're gonna do when they wanna put a whole new road in and this and that. I don't think they're doing what they should be doing. Okay?
Scott, can we, can we just have a comment on the remediation? Are they in compliance with their plan right now? Is there any concern on the part of the town?
That's regulated by the DEC, so we don't, we don't, we don't monitor that, so the DEC monitors that.
Okay.
Well, I, I think that, that the answer we need is, is more, not are they in compliance with the regulations, but are they moving ahead as fast as perhaps we might like? For example, he's, he's right, only the top surface aerates. You'd have to churn the soil to get it to aerate more than that.
They haven't, they haven't turned it once.
Hasn't been done?
Okay? No, hasn't been done, because they tell you one thing, and I live there, and I'm there every day, I walk my dog up to the gas station.
Sir, I don't think anybody said the applicant has said what they've done with the soil yet. I know I haven't...
I know it's done, 'cause I'm there every day.
I, I just don't want us to be saying that the applicant has told us they've done something that they haven't done. I, I haven't asked them what they've done with the soil. We'll do that momentarily.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying to bring out a point here. You understand where I'm, where I'm coming from?
I understand where you're coming from.
Let me ask you a couple of questions.
All right, and for the bottom line, think about the kids, the kids that go to school, the kids, the hundreds of kids that walk that road around that blind curve there every day, every day, and the track team comes running, and the girl track team comes running, and I don't know who chases who, the boys or the girls, but they're running. And it's hundreds of kids that run, and they don't look, they're texting, they're doing this.
Okay.
I'm just telling you.
Okay.
You're gonna make a big problem here.
Mike, you said you had a question, this gentleman?
Yeah, Bob, what do you think about the road, changing the road?
Changing the road? This guy here, he's, he's in trouble, because what you guys are gonna do to him, the value of his house is gonna go like this. You know, leave well enough alone. You wanna put a new building, you wanna put two or three extra pumps, put 'em in, but you don't need a drive-through for Dunkin' Donuts.
So, your issue is the drive-through?
My issue is the drive-through.
So, you would...
You're not gonna change the gas station that's there already, it's grandfathered. The little store that they work out of with the numbers and selling the pretzels or whatever, that's not gonna change. That car wash hasn't worked in decades.
Right.
You know, it's, all it does is keep the wasps and the bees, okay?
But you understand, as of right use, you can go back and just open a store, leave it as is, never mind the water, basically just build it as it is. That's as of right use.
Why not? If that's what he wants to do, let him, let him put new pumps.
Using the space from the car wash for a bigger store.
Let him put a bigger store, but you don't need the drive-through around the back onto Lake Road.
So, really, I mean, really, what we're talking about here is the drive-through and the water, right?
A gas station's gonna be there, whether it's, it's...
You understand.
Four pumps or six pumps. You know, as many pumps as it is, it's gonna be, but you don't need a Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through behind it to have traffic swing around the back. You're just adding more problems.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to kind of get you...
Well, I'm just saying, in that Archway Plaza, you got the Dunkin' Donuts there. That's not good enough? It has, it has to be a drive-through, and then, what's gonna happen at night? He says he's gonna close eleven, twelve o'clock? Yeah, right. Let me tell you something, you ever go to nine, and Dunkin' Donuts are nine, all the motorcycles pouring, and they all hang out there, and they revving their engines? Go by there sometime, 'cause that's what's gonna happen here. This is gonna become a hangout, and I don't want that in my neighborhood. I didn't come from the...
Is the, is the current Dunkin' Donuts open twenty-four hours?
Yeah, you could go in there anytime.
So, do, are there motorcycles that are there now? I'm just not clear why...
No, there's not, no, there's, no. Don't get me wrong, there's not motorcycles there, okay? But you're inviting it. When you have a drive-through, and there's bigger crowds, you're gonna invite something like that. All right? Right now, they gotta get out of their car to get the Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay, okay.
These are just some of the things, and there's no sidewalks. People that walk their dogs, like me, there's no sidewalks in the neighborhood, and the road's as skinny as hell. Two cars, one's gotta pull over this way when they're coming up the road, and if there's snow on it, you really gotta stop and let the other one get past you. The town don't even take care of potholes in the road. So, you know, leave well enough alone, let them put a new building, let them put two more pumps, but you don't need that Dunkin' Donut in the back, you don't need the tractor-trailers, that's another thing. How you gonna, anyone knows, you drive a tractor-trailer, you don't go straight, you gotta swing out. Where are you gonna swing out on that road when you got out of the medical facility, you got cars coming out all day long? So, what are you gonna swing out in front of the, where they're pulling out? You guys gotta think this thing through. You gotta come, we gotta have a cup of coffee outside.
Sir, that's why we're having these meetings, just so that we can hear these concerns.
And, and also stand, stand on that corner, and we'll show you in person exactly what we're talking about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay? Sorry to take your time.
Okay.
I just, I just, I wanna clarify that the soil that is onsite is clean. It's not contaminated soil that's sitting onsite, and that is as per the applicant. I also stated at the last meeting that we're gonna be in touch with the applicant's environmental consultant. They are preparing a letter, tell us where they are with the environmental cleanup, with the DEC numbers that are associated with them, and that is forthcoming, that will be provided to the town.
Okay, 'cause that was one of the things we thought we'd have tonight, so I, I can understand the concern.
And we've been going back and forth, 'cause we're not only dealing with this station, we're dealing with Hope Bell Station too, we'll have that by the end of the month.
So, the pile of soil is not contaminated, it's not part of the treatment?
It's...
It's pure soil, just sitting there?
It's clean soil as per the applicant.
Okay.
Has it come from off-site, or is it soil that's already been remediated from onsite? Do we know?
Just let me, let me ask you that. The soil came out of the hole, I cannot take it anyplace else but to put it back in the gas station by DEC regulations.
Okay, but it's already been remediated.
But the soil is clean.
Okay, so, excuse me for misspeaking.
Thank you.
Brian, can you just stay, stay up for, for a minute? I wanna go through the comments we've had so far, and just, um, quickly, can you make sure that for our next meeting, we expand the plan to show the John Jay High School entrance and going back a little bit into the development, so we can understand where the houses are located in the driveways, and let's just make sure we've checked site distances and things like that?
Absolutely. I, I think now that we have a conceptual layout that's blessed by DOT, I think it expands the analysis.
Okay.
Could, could you, I, I just, the, the applicant just made a statement saying the soil is clean, he took it out of the hole by the gas station, but he can't move it because of DEC. If it's clean soil, why would they care? I don't understand.
He could ask that question directly to DEC, he could answer you why.
Okay, 'cause I don't understand that.
Okay, well, call him up and ask.
So, what we'll ask is for our next meeting, that we have an update from your environmental consultant, just explaining what's going on at the site, and just help us understand what's there and what we should expect.
Because my, my could get one out of the billion, one percent in it. You're not allowed to take it out. You gotta leave whatever you take out of the property inside the property.
Okay, so, so there is some contamination, but it's a very low, low level?
The low level is below the fifty part per billion.
Okay.
Let's put it that way.
And they still won't let you move it?
They won't let me move it.
That is weird.
No, it's not this, that's all through your state.
Sorry, I didn't understand, that, that just didn't make any sense to me.
Okay.
If I move it, I go to jail, somewhere else.
Okay, well, we're not, we're not looking for that, we're just looking for an update, and Brian, you'll bring that for the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Um, coming, coming back to some of the comments we've had so far, can we clarify, and will you, can we put a note on the plan about when deliveries will be permitted onsite, and can we avoid the, those same hours from eleven to six, so that we have deliveries outside of that time period?
That's fine. We have delivery notes on there too, we've said it numerous times in front of the board, but we will refine.
Okay. Um, I'm talking specifically for the deliveries, though, and also, if we can just clarify on the plan, where on the building the deliveries will be brought to, so that we have confidence that that, when it's parked on the side, that we're not gonna end up with folks parking in a place other than that.
Yep, we got a set of architectural review plans that have been approved, that showed delivery doors, we will...
Perfect, okay.
Put them on the plan.
Okay. Um, we talked about the site distance for the new layout, showing all the driveways, and, including both across fifty-two and back into the development. Um, can you also, with the road, and I know you haven't done a lot of the, the detailed drawings yet, but give us something that shows what kind of screening we would be able to do with the new Lake Road to help the folks that have the house right next to Archway. Let's, just let us understand what can be done there. If nothing can be done there, 'cause of site distance, we, we should know that too.
Yep.
Um, with the new layout of Lake Drive, have we considered putting a, a partial sidewalk in, Scott, to bring pedestrians from wherever the crosswalk is on fifty-two up, up into, getting them at least past the, the business district and into the development?
Brendan and I have conceptually talked about it. I mean, the, the, the width of
Brendan and I have conceptually talked about it. I mean, the width of the road is a standard 24-foot with standard shoulders, which do permit the availability for curbing to go in, sidewalks to go in, and so on and so forth. So I think realignment does provide that avenue to be done in the future.
Okay.
So we've looked at it in discussion preliminarily, nothing set in stone.
Okay. And then also, if there's going to be, like, when you do the larger view of the plan, if there's gonna be a crosswalk, to show us where that would be and help us know, or if we're gonna leave the crosswalk where it exists now, down past Archway where the light is, just so we know where we're anticipating that to be. With regard to the fuel pumps, there will be diesel at the new station as well? Will we be fueling tractor trailers, or is that just passenger vehicles?
This is not a truck stop, this is a pass-through, this is not a truck stop.
So you're not gonna have the high roof or-
It's only for cars or pickup trucks.
Okay. You'll bring the remediation plan, and that's all that I have. So does anybody have any other notes that we need to make sure Brian will address?
You forgot to mention, when you come off of the new Lake Drive into Lake City, there's that blind spot.
Right. Brian's gonna give us a larger plan, so we can see where the driveways are, up along Lake Drive, and then we'll look at the site distance with the way they're proposing to realign that road.
The new Lake Drive into the development.
Correct.
Just, I'll probably-
Yes, yes.
Also, I wanna say something to the audience. When I bought this gas station, the mediation, nobody was working on the water, cleaning the water. I have brand-new system in there, and now we are under mediation.
We, can I just have you talk into the mic, because we need to capture-
This gas station, as we speak, is under mediation, cleaning up the underground water. Our gas system wasn't running for all those years until I took over. And this is by DEC requirements, okay? Any future topsoil to be onsite, we're not allowed to have it more than 60 days. We have to move it by law, just to let you know.
Where do you move it to?
They take it to a landfill, for special, like, you know, the special place.
Like when they cleaned up the Hudson with the GE PCV?
Yes. But if the soil is clean, you keep it onsite, because we need fill. Instead of bringing a fill from outside, you use that as a fill.
Okay, so they would let you move it offsite, but you're gonna keep it there?
They move it offsite, only the polluted soil, you get back to Albany landfill.
Yeah, I, so you can move polluted soil offsite, but you can't move clean soil offsite? I don't understand that.
Why you want, you wanna-
I just don't understand, that's all.
But no, it's common sense to you, because you're the only obstacle all the time on the board. Because you make questions, nobody could answer you.
Okay.
This is a DEC thing, I don't think it's this applicant's issue.
This is not the first application in front of you, you ask the same questions, I cannot even answer you. You're the only person on the board.
Sir, I, okay.
I think we've got-
It's not the first time.
I'm comfortable with where we are with the soil.
I'm tired of them.
Are we comfortable with the soil?
Let me, I came here to this-
And we'll have an answer.
No, I wanna ask something.
That's all right.
Okay, Brian?
No, I have to say that. No, listen, I came here, I wanna put it back as a convenience store with the garages. No, you could come with one building as a concept, the town wanna see one building with a Dunkin' Donuts. We done it. This is okay. We came here, we show a no building, as better than existing buildings.
It's not John Hickman's call.
I know, it's not John Hickman's call. No, 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 I'm not saying that. We had proposed-
We've gotta, we've gotta move on, we've got a lot more-
There was never, when this was discussed on the reconfiguration of the site, we wanted to merge, there was no discussion on the town's part.
No, no, no discussion, I just-
Dunkin' Donuts, you just said that.
Absolutely.
And additionally, the concept of realigning Lake Drive was an initiation of the [inaudible].
No, no.
So you get way off base here.
No, I didn't mean it that way.
And I think what we'll do is, I'm gonna call DEC and get an update from DEC about the remediation, and a report from them to see if they're agreed that you're in a timely manner.
Okay.
And then we'll see, then we'll have the answer from the authority that regulates it, not the town.
Okay. And then what Brian will bring to the next meeting is the update on the remaining time that we're expecting for the remediation. Okay.
Lori, sorry, I just wanted to, one more thing. I don't know if we're at this point yet, but Brian and I had agreed that once the site layout was at a certain point, that I would look at the lighting. So I just wanted to keep that in the list of things that still needs to get looked at.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Who's the next person on our list?
Steven.
Steven?
I'm Steve Ramsey. I live at Five Rutherford Drive. And I'm kinda curious, why, there's no alternate way to bring water into our neighborhood? I mean, I get the feeling at our last meeting that there's this big push to move that road, bring water to us, that we probably won't get for another 10 years.
Well, no, I think to understand that, he, this applicant, would bring them the main, right across the road, okay?
Regardless of where Lake Drive is.
We have an agreement with Fish Gill for 80,000 gallons a day. We're using 35,000, that for Shenandoah. Fish Gill's had an issue with some of their pumping systems, et cetera, so that they had to submit a plan to the Department of Health to approve some updates and improvements that they had to make. Once that plan is approved by the Health Department, the Health Department will allow us access from 35,000 to 80,000, so the water will be there.
I'm not, it's just a pipe. I understand what you're saying.
He's bringing the pipe to the back of the site. In three weeks, we're meeting in Albany with the state to get them to-
You didn't plan now to get it going?
Well, no, that part of it is to get money from them out of the remediation front, to put the pipe down the street, so the homes can connect.
So if you didn't get that road, it'd be a problem?
Logistically, we've looked at our connection point, where the current Lake Drive, because there's a septic system in front of the Medical Plaza, that where it prohibits us from putting our jack, because DOT won't let you cut across the road on an angle.
How about Rutherford Drive?
Rutherford Drive, well, the applicant only knows is gonna pay to bring water made down on Rutherford Drive, because he's looking to tap into it. So you're kinda piggybacking his extension across 52, to extend it to the back of his property. I don't know that he would-
I mean, I'm just kinda playing, I see the free ticket you're talking about here, crossing the road. But even then, if you don't get that road, it becomes a problem.
We haven't figured out how to bring it across exactly yet, at its current alignment. We've met with DOT, they won't let us open, cut the road, they don't want, we can't bore across at an angle, so we have not figured that out. However, this alignment resolves that issue. If this does not get realigned, we have to go back and try to figure out how we're gonna get across the current Lake Drive.
I think you would have, I think you have alternatives by now.
Well, no.
Are you gonna wait till this game plays out to come up an alternative, if you don't get our road? See, my concern here is safety.
Keep in mind, without-
The big concern here is safety, and I get a feeling, this, tonight, I got a big feeling, because we discussed this whole drawing last month, and here we are again, the same drawing, hasn't been expanded to include the one-way entrance into the high school, which I don't see that tying up any traffic or inflicting with everybody, because I've pulled in there many times, you just, and you're in. It's not you stop and hold up traffic and turn into there.
It's not a conflict for going into the entrance, it's if you're sitting at Lake Drive, and you wanna make a left-hand turn onto Route 52, and there's someone coming down, eastbound on 52, that's gonna go into the right, into that right-turn entrance, that is a conflict with that left turner.
It's a gradual, it's not like it's a stop and turn. It's a gradual pull or-
No, the right turn, the person entering John Jay, completely unrestricted. I 100% agree with that.
I don't, I disagree with you, that's some kinda conflict with-
It's a conflict with the left turners off of Lake Drive.
Right, I understand that. I don't really see, I haven't really seen that conflict all the years I've been doing it, with my children so far. I got a few more that go to that high school. So, and then, we didn't expand the picture out to show how you make this blind turn going into the neighborhood even worse.
That will be done.
So, as, they've been pointing out to you how a nice walking neighborhood it is, they still haven't pointed out to you how many students park at the soccer fields and walk to the high school. They don't point out to you how many students, when they get to drive, they park there, they drive across town, and they park in our friend's driveway, so they can walk to the high school. They don't point out to all the seniors that get to park on the high school property, you know, you're talking about people who aren't experienced drivers, they're in rush, they wanna get a cup of coffee, because even my daughter's like, drop me off at the Dunkin' Donuts. Now, she's gonna drive to school, go to Dunkin' Donuts, and now we're in this big circle, that once you get one part of the cog stopped, the whole circle stops. Let turn in, let turn in, get your coffee, you're talking about people getting gas, everybody wants to leave here. Everybody's leaving here. Why don't they go left turn now? See, you didn't expand the picture. Expand the picture, show this.
We didn't, just to be clear, sir, sir.
So everybody wants to make a left-hand turn out here, because they're gonna stop.
Excuse me, sir, sir, I wanna be clear, this picture will be expanded. The reason, the reason it's not expanded now is because we only just got something from the DOT saying that they would even consider this a few days ago. So to be fair to the applicant, we're not hiding anything here. This is gonna have to come back, and we will have that expanded picture.
I understand, but so now, if you expand the picture, you've got your left turning lane, and once this starts backing up, no one can turn out. So that puts them through our neighborhood, if they can get out this way. But even then, the children, the students, all walking through here, it's all a concern of safety. I'll start at that level, the students. Let's start with the concern of safety for the drivers. We're already rated at C. Goes to an E at a certain time, we're just gonna go to F. Now you're gonna ask the school to realign this, realign the road, and make it an intersection into the parking lot. So you have one, two, and when you finally open up the IVM, east or west, that's even a third. This is a cog in the machine that's not gonna work. That actually stops it. This big cog is gonna stop it, and it's gonna make a very big safety issue to the pedestrians that walk down here.
Okay.
That's my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Concerns of safety, we get that drive-thru, and you're gonna increase traffic flow. And these people know they're gonna get the traffic flow, because they're willing to pay for all those holes to be moved. I can see the utilities, $5,000 a hole, I mean, all the fiber optics, the copper cable, and electrical lines all have to be moved. Who's paying that bill?
The utilities.
Wow, really? They're gonna agree to that?
So that town road, the roads move, they have to pay. So once you move a road, do the utilities move it?
Yeah. No, this is a cog that's gonna, that's really a safety, or a safety issue.
Okay. Do you have other concerns, or anything else we should note?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next-
Anne Spelman got bumped down, so she got her- Hi. I wish you had a microphone. I'm Anne Spelman. I've lived for 40 years on Birch Drive.
Can I hear you?
I need a microphone.
It's right, it's right there, you can just pull it towards you.
Okay, most of the concerns have already been mentioned. The water I'm interested in, because my well was poisoned by the previous, previous gas station, before Botini bought it. That's the man who went to Vermont, and nobody could find him. He poisoned our water with MSBE, or whatever that stuff is. I used to drink tons of that water. I was the first in my family to get cancer. I had cancer three times. I drank tons of that water before. Now I buy water, 24 bottles every week. I lug them up the stairs, three at a time, because I have no one to help me. I live alone. I have a cat, doesn't matter much. Okay. The water is interesting. The, my big concern here is the traffic, the children walking without sidewalks. I have the firsthand experience with that. My 10-year-old daughter, Patricia, was killed on the road in Hawthorne, because there were no sidewalks. She was walking on the side of the road with an ice cream cone in her hand, and a car hit her from behind.
Sorry to hear that.
And she died of a fractured skull and a broken back spine, and I stood there and watched her die. And the policeman told me she had a weak pulse, but it's very weak. And I knew she was dying, and there was nothing I could do, nothing. I couldn't even scream. I was stunned. The ice cream cone was knocked across the road. It is asking for trouble here, with extra traffic, with eight pumps, which is ridiculous. We don't need eight pumps, we need four pumps. We're perfectly happy with four pumps, that's all we need. We don't need a drive-thru Dunkin' Donuts, it's ridiculous. The one that's there is fine. Get out of the car and get your coffee. No drive-thru. We have enough problems with robberies in the neighborhood. I've had antique wagon wheels stolen from the front of my house, from my front door, valuable, gone. I've had other things stolen. I had an American flag stolen from my front door. Things have been stolen in my, in my particular spot there on Birch Drive. I'm right between Roethel and Lake. I can go out either Roethel, but there's no light there anymore, and making a left turn can be a nightmare at certain times of the day. You sit and sit and sit and wait for the people to, somebody nice that lets you in. The other way has no light either. It's the same situation. Lake Drive has no light, and we need a traffic light there, if you're gonna do all this insanity, okay? We don't need eight pumps, forget it. Four pumps is all we need. And we need sidewalks. And if they can afford to build this monstrosity, let them pay for sidewalks, for the children that walk up and down the road every day. They pass my house all the time, and I see them, and I pray for them, because I worry, even when I drive, I don't move. If I see children on the road, I'm afraid to move. It just brings it all back to me, my Patty dying, a beautiful redhead dead on the road. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Mike Bowman, 28 years down at Circle Drive. First of all, regarding your study, the car wash, that's at least 10 years not been in use, all right? Moving the road over Lake Drive, like this gentleman had pointed out, it's not about, you can make, you can't make a left because of the cars coming westbound, all right? According to the board, down by the high school, there is a piece of property that's gonna, is trying to be sold. Has that been looked into regarding the traffic?
I'm not aware of-
John Jay High School, the driveway going into John Jay High School, adjacent to that on the other side of 52, yes.
They were here at the last public.
I'm just asking what's going in there, because that will increase traffic.
At zone residential.
Yeah, we have nothing in front of us right now.
Okay, I'm just saying, take that into consideration. Bob stole everything, so the water condition, they hit on that. I mean, why are we having water pumped into us, like the lady just explained? Car wash, last used, regarding the gentleman would like to build here. Sitting behind me are the people that built this community, not Mr. Hickman and not businesses. And I have to say, Robert, thank you very much for looking out for the people that live here, not the big business. I have a bad taste in the back of my throat with the town board, probably not you guys, but originally, the back property there, which would have been Warren, it was basically wetlands. The board, an old board, allowed it to be built. It floods there. Then, Andres' Motocross was sold, 100 acres adjacent to us. Now we have flooding all the time. How can I believe you people? That's all I wanna say.
Do we have any other names, sir? Sure. We have been out to the site.
Can I also say just one very quick question? Something was brought up, and I hadn't thought about it, it's true, the numbers that they have gotten for the usage is askew, because the fact that it isn't enough for the gas station.
Just let me, I know there's been a few comments, and just for a point of clarification, the existing study of traffic was based-
Brendan, just grab your mic if you want.
Sorry. Was based on the existing traffic as the gas station operates there today. When we looked at the 2014 no-build condition, we added traffic back in for the full function of the gas station and the full function of the car wash.
Thank you.
Okay, so it wasn't, it wasn't that we didn't, we did add it back in to do that study.
Thank you.
Where'd you get them numbers from?
From, it's a transportation manual, it's the industry standard for traffic generation.
We live there, we see every day the amount of traffic that goes into that gas station. All day long, it's a gold mine.
Okay. Do you see, do you have a first name?
I don't know if it's an R-O-T-R or P-E-D-E-R, it's, I can't read the writing on that one.
Anyone?
Somebody did, but I don't know if that was-
Okay, let's go ahead on to the next, we'll call the name again at the end.
Alan.
Alan?
Alan Klaudner, 11 Circle Drive. I just wanna start by making clear to the developer that whatever he does will be an improvement over what's there. And I think he's missing the fact that we're not, we don't wanna stop any development there, we just want it to be appropriate for the area. I have a bunch of stuff that's been touched on, but I wanna clarify some things regarding the fencing around the soil, dirty or not. I have pictures on my phone of every time it rains, that whatever those piles are, clean or dirty, washes in and goes into the storm drain and runs into the gilder sleeve. I'd be more than happy to share them with the board. Whatever's going on on that- Whatever's going on on that site now is ineffective and needs to be addressed either by the DEC or the board or somebody, the health department, because there is, whether it's 1% or .5 or it's contaminated soil, that is now washing away into our water supply.
Pam.
That needs to be addressed.
Pam, would you mind providing your email address to this gentleman so he could email us those pictures and then we'll put them in our record?
The, the rerouting of the road, you know, obviously I'm not in favor of it. That hurts my neighbors and that causes my neighbor over there a huge problem because his house is now going to be directly behind this new building. So you're, you're now going to affect two people in a terrible manner as opposed to one. The project, as I said in the past, is too big for the area. There is absolutely no reason why you need to double the size of the pumps. You're, you're more than doubling the size of the building. Whether he has the ability to do it is fine, but he needs to do it in an effective manner that takes the consideration of the 80 homeowners who live in this area and the over 200 people who live back there. Their quality of life should mean something to this board and not just the financial aspirations of a developer who's coming in here to make money. You know, we've, we've dealt with the garbage issue. It's still filthy. I still pick up and I bring my wheelbarrow up Lake Drive and I pick up Dunkin' Donuts and cans and garbage. And then I put them back in the dumpster from whence they came. And I do that periodically and that's still not being addressed. The site is filthy. Delivery regarding off-peak delivery hours. I recommend that the board go down and take a look at the site across from Allsport. There are tractor trailers, multiple tractor trailers in that parking lot at 7:00 AM and at 9:00 AM. And that causes the traffic to back up onto Elm Street and Fishkill, up onto Old 52 and out onto Route 9. You cannot even get into that gas station when, when they are fill, or get out, when they are filling up or making deliveries. So whether they do, you know, whether you stagger your times or not, the delivery into this site is going to be, is going to cause a problem. Something new I heard today, which was very surprising, is now we're actually contemplating Archway Plaza dumping out onto the new Lake Drive. In previous meetings here, that has always been discounted because one, the current owner has said they're not interested. And we all know what happens when current owners sell, new people buy it and the rules all change. So now you're going to have the Medical Arts Building dumping out onto Lake. You're going to have this property dumping out onto the lake. You're going to have Archway dumping out onto the lake. You're going to have the 60 or so houses that come up Lake saying, I don't want to have anything to do with this mess, so I'm going to go down Birch. And to my friend's point, the, the extra traffic is within our group. It's within this neighborhood. We're going to get extra traffic coming off of 52, coming off of 84 when they put the sign up that there's a 24-hour drive-through Dunkin' Donuts. So welcome to Hopewell Junction. And, and guess where they're going to go? They're going to go, well, let's just drive around and see what's in the back here. And then we're going to have crime and all kinds of other things. So just as an aside, I pulled into that, that gas station's not being used today. There's a couple of people in there. They buy their lottery tickets and their cigarettes. I made a left off of 52 in the middle of the day. There was no traffic and I almost got T-boned by something, somebody coming out of the gas station because they think that Lake Drive is part of that gas station. So this doesn't alleviate that even with the curbing. You're going to have people filling up and coming out because they're not going to care that somebody's coming out of Lake City. I haven't heard one person in favor of this project. You've heard a lot of people and some of them are the same, myself included, but the project of this size is too big for the area. We've been told by town board officials in the past that Botini was going to bring water across. Now, it's very nice that the developers can bring water across as required to, but that doesn't solve the problem for the nine homes that are polluted and the other pollution that's currently going on as this dirty soil washes into our water system. I think you've answered that the board has been, has visited the site. Couple of very straight questions to this board. Would you want this in your neighborhood? Moving Lake doesn't alleviate the confluence of cars because it doesn't match up directly to the school. And if you saw any, the school doesn't have money to do anything. So hoping that sometime down the road, the state of New York and the Wappinger Central School District is going to agree to modernize and develop that four-way intersection to pull their students in. We're live, that's a dream. It's never, ever going to happen. The blind turn that we're now creating, making it terrible. What's the degree of turn? I walk, when you walk up from my house to the site, you actually have to walk on the island that's in between Birch so that you don't get hit by a car coming by the blind turn today. When you cut it even tighter, it's going to be worse. So that needs to be addressed. And one last thing regarding this new DOT conceptual, conceptual approval. Nobody from the DOT has contacted any of us. And it's very nice that the traffic department and the town engineer and whoever has spoken to the Department of Transportation, but maybe the Department of Transportation should come to one of these meetings and listen to the 80 residents or the 80 homes and the over 200 people that live in that neighborhood. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for against the John Jay Gas Station? Okay. Brian, can we have you come on back up?
I know the, aside from bringing the pipe across the road for the water, the, the dressing of the polluted water, Tom, we'll, we'll ask an update from the results of the meeting in Albany when you, when we come back again and look at this. Brian, there's been a lot of concern raised about the size of the development, the number of pumps, the drive-through. Is there any consideration to shrink this down a bit?
I'd have to speak to the applicant about that.
Okay. If you, if you'd have that conversation, if not, let's make sure when you come back again, just have that, have that expanded plan so we understand the, you know, the more global picture now that we've kind of zeroed in on a, on a site plan. Bear with me, sorry. Let me just read through my-
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
The last gentleman was talking about the requirement to bring water across the road. There's no requirement for that, is there?
No, the, the water is as the members of the public said, Botini has an arrangement with the state where there's money to supposedly help with the cleanup. That's what we're meeting with. The applicant has indicated that he would bring an old seismic across the road to the back.
But he is not required to. Okay, thank you.
Brian? I mean, I'm noticing that there is some, some sidewalks going from John Jay into Archway, across the street to Archway. Is there any way to expand any of the sidewalks down to Lake? Are there any more there to add?
The, the way we've laid it out, there is room for that. Like I said before, Brendan and I have talked about it.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, it sounds like that's a concern.
Right.
Might want to lay it in there just to see what it looks like.
Right. And I, I think a lot of this, we're now getting into more details as we've, as each of these meetings go on. So now that we have something from DOT, we, we didn't know if we had anything prior to this. So obviously our next mission will have a lot more detail.
Okay. I'm concerned to hear soil runoff into drainage systems. So can we please make sure that that's addressed before the next meeting and include that with your update on the status of the-
Absolutely.
remediation? The only, the only other comments I would have, I, I understand the concern with potential additional traffic coming back into the development. I would agree. I think one or two folks mentioned that you believe the bulk of that traffic may come from within your own development as you divert and go drive different roads to, to maybe avoid this area of Lake. But Brian, one thing I'm thinking is if, if there's something with the realignment here, if there's any traffic control measure we can put in place to help slow folks down or to make sure if there was sign, whatever signage is appropriated, there's, we're hearing the phrase blind curve. Let's clarify that. And if there's signage to be put up or clearing to be done, let's understand what that is.
I think what I'm going to do with that issue is I'm going to try to reach out to Scott. We can meet on site. I know when we were originally walking out there with DOT, we were looking at how to potentially tie in. We didn't really focus on the blind turn because it was more on the other side of Lake Drive. But now that we've obviously addressed an additional concern, I'll reach out to Scott. We can meet on site with Brendan and take a look at that issue.
Okay. And I guess I, I think that was the last of my notes. We had, I had some additional comments, but I think we already covered them previously. Just getting the more global picture, I think, of the development is the important thing for next time. And definitely understanding the condition of the site and what we should expect and making sure there isn't soil runoff.
Absolutely.
Especially during rains.
Scott, are you going to check that?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments from board members before we adjourn? Okay. So Brian, you're going to draw up a couple of new plans. I want to make sure you have your update on the remediation. We need to get the expanded plan a little more detailed, just to, you know, just to the point of being able to understand how we think pedestrians will move, what, what we think traffic control measures will be, that sort of thing. How much time?
I think in first meeting of August.
August 6th?
I, I think we're going to need time to clear things up with DEC, get a report and everything. So I think that might be a little too soon.
August 6th is too soon? The second meeting in August is August 20th or the first meeting in September is September 3rd?
September's down.
Because you got August 7th on vacation until you're done.
Are you guys looking to go back to that, right?
After tonight's meeting, it's at the applicant's discretion. I can't speak for him.
Okay. Are you, are you comfortable with September 3rd or are you?
I mean, I, I would like sooner, but it appears that we've had a couple of dates suggested for September, so. August 6th is what the applicant is requesting.
And you're going to have new plans, all the additional drawings? You're going to have the update on the environmental-
I don't have anything from DEC by October.
Understood. I'm going, but Tom, I think what, what, what we want to make sure the applicant understands is if we don't have that information, then we would probably be adjourning again.
What's discretion is set in this meeting.
When do you, when do you think we'll have an answer on DEC?
Well, I mean, this is, we're going into the summer season for DEC. The public's going to be waiting in August too. So I'm thinking by the September meeting would be more than likely that everybody-
Okay. Just asking that, I don't-
Just working off of what we've been doing with DOT, I, I would, I would request that if we could do the August meeting, that would be great. If we have the information present from DEC, we can, we can certainly discuss it. If not, it's going to be adjourned. I think the applicant's aware of that.
Shall we split the difference and go for August 20th? I'm looking at the board.
If the applicant thinks he can have it done.
August 6th.
Give us a date, then we just adjourn if it's not.
Understanding we will have to adjourn if we don't have that information. All right. Then do I have a motion from a board member?
So moved.
Second.
Just clarify what your motion is.
Move it to August 6th, adjourn to August 6th.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? I'm actually opposed to that. I'd rather wait until we have the full set of, of information. Thank you, Jason. Okay. August 6th. For, for members of the public, that means the next time this will be on our agenda will be August 6th. Again, we hope to have those expanded plans, the update on any runoff that's happening at the site and the remediation plan.
Can I ask a question? What is the notice period that the applicant needs to notify the local residents that they're going to a-
It's already done. Done.
That notice just happened.
And any adjournments?
They should have signs on the property that they update with the next meeting date.
It's always a good idea to check the agenda on the website.
Well, August 6th will be the next time this is on the agenda. August 6th.
Always a good idea to check.
You see all the people that live there. Look at these faces because we are the people that are going to be affected by your decisions. Think about your mother, father. Think about your brother, your sister.
Sir, we've, we've closed the public hearing for tonight. I do appreciate the comment. I don't want to discourage you from coming back, but for tonight, we've got to move on to the next item on the agenda.
I just want to ask you one more question. What is this all about? The dollar? I don't understand. What, what, why do they want to change something that is working and fine with the neighborhoods? What's it all about?
You, you have a, you have a property owner in East Fishkill that would like to develop their property. That's putting significant money in to improve the site and to cure some problems that are issues there. And he's asking to have a different type of development. It's a request. It's not a requirement. We understand that.
You know, he can develop-
Understood. Okay. Folks, I'm just going to, I'm just going to ask, we're going to be moving on with the next part of our agenda.
We have six more items in front of us.
I just wanted to ask one quick question.
We've got six more items in front of us.
What does Wappinger Central School District say about this? John Jay High School?
They're in favor.
Excuse me?
They're in favor.
They're in favor?
They're in favor. They're willing to work on realigning their access.
Okay. The, the next item-
They're buying into it because it's bringing the traffic. All right, don't shake your head. I mean, don't, but, but don't ask the question. I believe the answer.
Okay.
I don't believe the answer.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is Lehigh Landscaping amended site plan discussion on Sprout Creek Court.
Approve now. Approve now. Get out of here.
Yeah, if you just turn the chair, that's fine. We're good.
Good evening. We're here tonight for the Lehigh Landscaping Project, which will be there soon. We were here at last meeting and the board had asked that we make some modifications. One of the modifications, we relocated these bays along the same line as the existing building, rear yard site pack. In doing so, we had to go to the ZDA, which we were at last week to ask for a rear yard variance. We are also asking for the existing coverage. We're slightly over. The existing coverage is slightly over. We're adding a little bit to it. We're asking for 4.2% variance for coverage. And we're also asking for a variance for the existing front yard. So that will be covered as well. They've set a public hearing for next month. So we'll be brought here and make basically the same plan we talked about. We did, we did increase this radius here. We brought the roadway out onto here so we can now move this traffic for, for better use of that area if we will. We pulled everything up as far as we can. Septic system, septic system is, as you see right here. We've got to change the existing distribution box to an H20 loaded box. And other than that, that's pretty much everything we've done.
Okay. Mark, I'm sorry. You, you said something and I, I was writing a note, something about the coverage is, you have a 4% variance on your site coverage?
We're asking for 4.2% variance for coverage. As it exists, it's slightly over at 4.8%. Now, I think we're increasing it to 4.2, so we ask for that variance as well.
Okay. Did we discuss that at the planning board at the last meeting? I just didn't remember that. Was that part of our referral to the ZDA? Okay. Okay. But was it for, was it for this? I thought it was for something else. For the site coverage?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't think so.
Well, the site coverage, we weren't aware of until we started reviewing access.
That's what I'm saying. I, I thought it was a referral for a different purpose. Okay.
Mark, what can I? I'm sorry.
We, the reason why we've, we've added increased coverage is because of the way we re, changes the rear part of the area.
So is there more paving now that, originally I think you had some gravel back there or?
Well, this, this, remember, we put, we put impervent some of this.
Okay.
That, I think the board has asked that we do that, so.
Right. So your materials don't leach? Okay.
So that was the deal.
Mark, what kind of screening is going to be between that and the rail trail?
Actually, right here is a very dense area of trees. This area was dense, but they cut it when they removed, or I'm sorry, when they installed the sign right there. So we're going to be putting in trees in the back here along that, that's not really the, that's not really the rail trail. That's an accent that's made on the rail trail. We're going to be putting- So we're gonna be putting arowed trees in the back of your...
Okay, then, then from all perspectives, this is an improvement for the rail trail, because if you see that lot today, it basically looks like a kind of an overgrown gravel pit. It's just...
Right. I don't know if anybody's down here, but from here over, this site looks pretty much undeveloped. I mean, it's, it, you wouldn't even know it's the same parcel, but it is the back of the same piece. They've just never done any development.
And there's a few buildings way out back you don't even see.
There's buildings over here and around here.
Yep.
And of course, the other gate wasn't finished.
And Michelle, I know that, I, I think you had discussed at the last meeting the, the screening for the rail trail. Did, did you get, your office was gonna make some suggestions on species that might be planted here, or?
Yes, we were just sort of waiting till we had a more finalized plan before we did that. But yes, she can make some, some recommendations for species.
So Mark, if you would just coordinate through Michelle's office?
Sure, actually, if you want, you can meet with, you know, obviously, he's in the business. He could, you know, he'd certainly be happy to work with you.
Sure. Okay. So Mark, you have now the site, you have a variance for your site coverage. What else are you in front of the Z D A for?
Well, the rear yard setback, we've discussed.
Okay.
And also the existing front yard, that's unique.
And that's an existing condition made slightly worse by your changes? Or just that you want to get the variance because the use is...
Not conforming.
Okay.
So we're asking for that variance as well.
Okay.
We would actually have to ask for the rear yard, because it's existing unforming as well.
Okay. So questions or concerns from board members regarding the request at the Z D A?
I, I'd like this proposal. I think it's also gonna be an improvement in that the last time, like, a tree fell on this building? And a tree stayed there for six months?
No one really knew it was there.
Yeah.
There's a joke there somewhere. If a tree falls on a building and no one knows.
There you go.
Brendan, site, site circulation and traffic?
I have a couple of very minor comments, Mark. On the truck circulation plan, I believe that's a W B forty that you showed. And I just wanted to know, is that, is that realistic of actually what's gonna be delivering stuff to the site?
Yes, he gets, most of his stuff is shorter, you know, he has smaller vehicles. He gets his deliveries. He doesn't have tractor trailers coming in. He has the short ten-wheelers and things like that. They deliver material to...
Well, all I'm getting at is that maybe the vehicle you ought to show is a tri-axle and not, and not a W B forty. If that's truly, I mean, because, I mean, you know, your applicant's gonna know.
Well, we're trying to show emergency...
When you look, when you look at the, when you look at the turning of the two, there's some differences, but it should be representative of really what the delivery's gonna be in.
But wouldn't you want us to show that for emergency vehicles?
Yeah, that, but then, then that's a different vehicle too.
Okay.
Alright, we can, we can show both of them. I don't think you're gonna have an issue with this, but...
No, actually, I mean, it, it, it makes it around. I don't think we'll have an issue, but you wanna, you wanna, what do you want us to show?
What, what the actual delivery vehicle is gonna be.
Okay, so if we show...
And then, and then we can show the, the fire rapper.
Fire, and then we'll show a tri-axle.
A tri-axle. That, that's what they get deliveries in, because, I mean, a W B forty, I know they might get dump body, tractor trailers. I don't know. It's to deliver material.
Uh, not, not usually.
But, you know, they, they can come in any size, so...
Yeah, he doesn't, well, he, he also has a facility on Daly Road. I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, he said Maloney. He does get, he receives and stores material there as well.
And then brings it over here.
Correct. So, well, no, I'm sorry. He, he'll store them at both sites.
Okay.
So they would be...
So this is an additional site. This is not a relocation of the business, okay?
Right. He will relocate, for the most part, his office and everything. He'll keep that as a shop. And other stores, he stores salt and snowplows and everything will stay over there, so...
So he knows when he gets the material.
Are we storing salt on this site?
And all I'm saying is, just make the vehicle what he's actually getting.
Okay.
I know, I just want to clarify if it will also be here.
My other minor comment is, if I understand, everything, you know, everything to the right of the building is all gravel, other than the underlying of, of the bins.
Correct.
And the only, my only improvement I could see is to make some type of apron transition from that gravel to the paves. Like to the circle, you'd want to put some kind of, some kind of apron, so that we weren't tracking, you know, gravel and dirt out onto the, yup, there, and then even at the, even there. Like, you know, some type of apron, so that we didn't track material out onto the paved surfaces.
Okay.
If that exacerbates the coverage, can you just amend that with the Z D A?
Are they gonna let me do that? I'm in for a public hearing, so...
It's a recommendation of the planning board.
I know, but how does that affect the, the public hearing?
When Pam comes back, we'll double check.
Okay, alright.
Actually, Mark, the paved apron is something Town Highway specs we're gonna require anyway.
Okay.
Mark, just to clarify, they're not storing salt on the site?
No, 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 we, we clearly talked about that. He has salt storage in Daly Road. I said leave it there. No.
Is there any other substance that might leach into the soil being stored at this site?
No, it's basically inert. It's mulch, stone, topsoil.
Natural mulch.
The gravel with topsoil, but that's about it.
Okay.
Mark, do you know if it's gonna kind of colored mulch or anything? Sometimes the different colors and dyes can leach different...
That I don't know. I don't know if he's using red mulch or black mulch. I don't know, to be honest with you.
Is that like Google Earth or something? We're still talking about the tree on the roof, I'm sorry.
You're Google Earthing.
Sorry, Mark, where I was going with, with the mulch.
Yeah, it's on there.
Some mulches are dying.
The tree is laying on the roof.
Some are ground up rubber, you know, it all depends on...
Oh, no, no.
If they're natural mulches, then there's...
Yeah, it's, I mean, it may be colored, but to my knowledge, I don't know that that's hazardous. I mean, it's in every, it's in a lot of houses.
That was the question.
I don't think it's, it's strictly organic. It's not, he's not doing anything weird with, you know, ground up sneakers or anything like that. He's not doing that.
Okay.
Sorry, the mulch covers a big area, and I, I didn't think you meant it, but I thought I'd ask.
Yeah, I don't think he's, no, I know he's not using that.
So, this is gonna be primarily just, you know, garden nursery stuff.
Correct.
And, and it's gonna be buffered from the rail trail.
Correct.
So, so basically, then it's also gonna clean up, because there is like, was there like a mine or something back there? There's a whole bunch of pits.
Oh, I don't know. To be honest with you, I really don't know. I know, I know...
On this site or back further?
There's something over here. Uh, when they were putting the rail trail in, when they opened up that right away, there appeared to be a structure that was part of the railroad. It almost looks like there was a dump body, where they would take a train and just dump the material into the bottom. And it's, I think, still there, but...
But no, that, that field in the back has a number of pits in it, like it was an old gravel or something.
Do not know.
Okay.
Not aware of it.
Okay.
There's Pam.
Pam, if we needed to amend the information in front of the Z D A to increase the non-conformance of site coverage, is that an issue, or can we still do that?
Because they're in a public hearing.
There's no way to amend it? Yes, no?
Yes.
So what is that necessity? Re-advertising and an adjournment or something to that effect? Okay. So Mark, if you can't keep the non-conformance within what you've already advertised for, you're gonna have to let the zoning board know that.
If we can do something, I, I, if, if the board's okay with it, I mean, I may to just expedite, maybe ask him to remove some of the pavement that's up near the rail trail entrance ramp. Maybe we can... I don't, I don't...
Even on the left-hand side, down towards the road, you can remove pavement, I think.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think I can convince him to, for purposes of what we're doing. We don't need all that parking in front, but he's...
It, it's like a huge parking lot with a whole building.
He says he wants it.
Michelle, do we have excess parking at this site?
Mark?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if there's a way you can mitigate and ship that around, then that's what you need to do. Otherwise, you're gonna need to adjourn at the Z D A and re-advertise.
No, I'd rather, it's easier to...
Rather not do that.
I'm just, I, I mean, you know, you need to accommodate the apron and...
Okay.
So Mark, one of the little, the little sketch that Joe just drew here was, you know, maybe eighty-six in the four something, four parking lots in the back, and then actually just create a little loop. Just create a loop, and they can cut the air...
That's what we'll do. We'll get it down there.
Okay.
Now, is there gonna be a problem if I don't need that variance?
If you don't need it?
Yeah, because we're advertising.
No, it will not be, it should not be a problem.
You didn't advertise for that.
He needs a setback variance, if he doesn't need the, if he doesn't need the site coverage variance, that would be okay. Right.
So if I shave off more and I just tell the Z D A, we actually don't need this variance, but go ahead and grant it? Or they wouldn't just grant that variance, I guess, I don't know.
You wouldn't need it.
You wouldn't need it, so...
Yeah, so as long as they've advertised it, then I haven't done anything wrong. Okay.
Well, I'm not gonna go that far, Mark, but...
I'm sure we can find silver lining.
Keep talking.
Alright. Joe, did, did we resolve the floodplain question? Was, did we get updated topo for that?
No, we, we, that's a fairly new comment.
Okay.
I can, I can show Mark some of the mapping. Yeah, it shows up in the floodplain. I'm not sure why, but...
What does, what does under the main?
From where?
Right, but here it's in a, it's, it is next to a studied stream, at least, so you have an elevation that you can go by.
What floods?
I think it was the Sprout Creek, which is, divides Fishkill from Wapo, East Fishkill from Wapo, or... Yeah.
Okay, so Mark, take a look at that for us, if there's anything to be changed there. If you could just update your site to show whether or not you're, you're above or below that floodplain?
Well, if we're in it, we're certainly not, we're not doing anything to make it worse. I mean, the worst thing that happens is you're gonna get mulch floating down the stream if we flood, but, you know what I'm saying? I'm not gonna grade this to come above it.
I think it's probably more your storm water, right?
No, it's, it was more the elevation of the building, the finished floor with respect to the floodplain. And anyways, not really doing any, any grading.
So if it's getting water in it, it's getting water in it now. And, and I met the owners a few weeks ago. They've never mentioned flooding.
I've never seen big puddles there, no matter what size rain.
Never.
They could...
Well, let's just clarify whether you're in it, whether you're not, what the elevations are.
Well, the problem is, and I'm, I'm sure you guys are aware about this, this May 2012 report, it's way off. I mean, everything is in the floodplain right now. They've greatly expanded it. And, you know, and that's, that's been a problem we're gonna fight, because, you know, if this, this shows up in it, what do we do?
We have an existing facility here.
Yeah, true.
Can we just document it?
I think we were looking more, more...
I think that's all we're asking for, we need to document it.
Right, confirming the, the elevation of the building with respect to what the mapping shows and...
I think it'd be completely different if it was a new, new project.
I'll look into it.
It's just a reuse of an existing facility.
I still think we need to document it. If he's showing he's, you know, three feet below the B F E, then we need to know that.
I don't think they have B F E on this.
Yeah, there, there is, there is a studied area.
Is it?
I can, I can probably have this.
Holy crap, are you kidding me? It's a building under water. It's ninety percent of the stuff.
That's odd, considering the rail, the rail trail.
Mark, that's why we just, we just need you to address it.
Alright.
If there's a reasonable way to address it, just explain it.
But...
It's elevated quite a bit, right?
The building?
No, the rail, over the, uh...
No, that building is, building right there.
It's not much.
Okay.
Mark, you can only carry rocks that doesn't...
It's a little lower than three seventy-six.
Okay.
Very small rocks.
Mark, the only other note I have is kind, kind of similar to another application we were just looking at. We probably need some kind of dust control agreement and... Scott, I'm...
We agree not to make...
Something similar to what we looked at for Paylene, probably.
Alright.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
What is a dust control agreement?
Scott can describe with something new for us, too.
What's that?
The dust control measures, what, what's expected on the plan for that, something similar.
They could probably just set up like the irrigation spray.
Oh, okay. So like something elevated?
They're gonna have the walls there, right?
Yeah.
I would think they can probably attach something.
Okay.
And spray it out at one eighty, yeah.
Okay. Alright, we can do that.
You can shut it off if it's raining.
Okay, we can do that. I don't think I need dust, don't spray it too much.
Mark, as far as the prior site plan, you're gonna review the prior conditions and try to make references to it on this plan.
Yes, we have, we've, we've got it.
Michelle, is there anything left on your end that we need to do? And did we circulate for lead agency yet for this one?
No.
Okay. Do we...
This might be a type two, really. I don't think there's any reason to, I don't really think there's any reason to circulate.
That's what I was gonna say, okay, do we need to? Alright. Anything else we need that would stop us from scheduling this for a public hearing? Joe, Michelle, Brendan, anything that would stop us from scheduling for a public hearing?
No.
Okay. Mark, you have to address the couple issues we brought up tonight.
Sure.
And then you have to have time to advertise, so July 16th is maybe a little close, August 6th?
Yeah, it might be. I was wondering if we, it'd probably be better to go after the Z D A, correct?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, what, what date are you at?
So why don't we go into, oh, the sixth, whatever you said, no, I don't want to be there for that, so... They're on for the sixth, right? Yeah.
Yeah, they are.
They're there for the sixth, yeah.
They are.
What is that, September 3rd? Can I be first?
Mark, it makes you look so good.
Sixteen, six. Yeah, why don't we, yeah, what's going on, August?
Pam, does it, does a new public hearing go before the adjourned public hearings?
What is the public hearing and zoning board?
July, what's, what's the next one?
I'm sympathetic, I mean, we have people that are sitting here for hours, because...
July 16th or August 20th?
Yeah, I think we'd be July, I don't know, maybe? I think you'd make it.
July 16th. I can move you to August 20th. Not move you, we could set you for August 20th.
Alright.
Um, does that, that's probably good in case you have to be adjourned at the Z D A too, right? That would be after the August meeting, too. So it's, if you want to go for August 20th, then you would have, if the, if the Z D A does adjourn you, you'd have one more meeting before you were back in front of us with your public hearing.
August 6th.
Okay.
Live dangers.
Do I have a motion to schedule, where am I? Lehigh Landscaping amended site plan for August 6th? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is Homesteads at Hopewell? Oh, am I looking at the wrong, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, my apologies, I have an old, a draft copy of it with notes. The next item on our agenda is Stone Ridge Common Site Plan on Route 52. Forgive me. Okay, Mark, since last we saw this, you had a couple things you were gonna try to do.
Yeah. Go all the way out. Oh, he did. You see where it says one of twenty-four? Yeah, do that, click on that side. Keep going, one more. Okay, that's good. Close that though. Okay, alright. What we've done, relocated this entrance, is now two hundred and fifty feet from the centerline of fifty-two, two hundred feet from the edge of fifty-two. Basically, give more of a stacking. Is this right on that hill? Excuse me? Is this right on that hill? No, actually, just before the hill. It's just before the hill. Yeah, the hill starts. I mean, it starts to.
It's slowly up.
But not, what you're thinking about is further up.
Yeah, all right.
It starts to go up, though. It's fairly flat there.
Is it?
It's wooded, so you know what it is, when you drive down, you see it, it's low, and then as soon as you go up, it starts to climb up. Basically, everything else is, is the same as it was at the last meeting. I mean, we've done smart tech, which I'm not sure the board's seeing. We're basically looking at, you know, this type, traditional type design. The building, obviously, on this side, this is a two-story structure, where you have a front, it's a single-story, it's front, a two-story in the back. This would be a single-story, single-story.
What's the use?
Well, right now, it's magical, you know, right now, we're literally invited for the town board, is where the bank and medical is what we're looking, there's no retail around on this site. So it's, I believe it's professional, it's better than here.
Brendan, I think you were looking at some, some traffic impacts. Did we have a conversation yet with the DOT, or can we have a conversation with the DOT to find out if full access onto 52 is allowable? Because, I mean, personally, I'd rather not see that entrance on Palin Road if we could have full access from 52.
There hasn't been any coordination at this point between myself and the DOT.
I have, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I have Rich Pearson here, if he could just take a few minutes to talk about.
Sure.
If that's okay, or would you rather?
No, I think, I think that makes sense, because.
I think that's the main impact we're going to worry about.
Good evening, Richard Pearson. If I may, I've got letters which the board may or may not have seen previously from 2006, from the New York State Department of Transportation, and from the Dutchess County Department of Public Works. They're conceptual approval letters. At that time, I prepared analyses and met with both agencies concurrently regarding the access. Originally, we did consider full access at the New York State 52 intersection. And based on our meetings with the DOT and the county, it was resolved between those two agencies that we should have two side-access driveways. That the Palin Road access should be limited to prohibit left turns into the site from Palin Road northbound. And that the Route 52 access should prohibit left turns out of the site. So first, I could hand these.
That's quite a few years ago, have you had any recent conversation?
I had. Yes, the left turn into the site was permitted by DOT back in our previous submission. There, I have not had recent follow-up conversation with DOT. I have had conversations with, with Dutchess County since this letter was prepared back a couple of years ago in response, one of the last times we were before the town. I believe DOT's policy would be consistent with their previous comments. And we did prepare a traffic study, which was just submitted to the town, based on our coordination with Brendan's office. We provided synchrofiles to Brendan, which include a simulation model for him to review the operations of the intersections. The left turn out of the driveway onto Palin Road operates at a level of service C, under proposed conditions, as with the project, in both the AM and the PM hour. Brendan also requested that we provide an analysis of no access at Palin, as you suggested, and full access onto Route 52. With that analysis as an alternative, eastbound left turns, or excuse me, left turns out of the site driveway destined toward Route 52 eastbound would operate at a level of service E in the morning and a level of service F in the afternoon.
Does that include with a turning lane, or is that without the turning?
Yeah, that's with separate lanes, separate left and right turn lanes coming out of the site.
And with a left-hand turn lane you could pull into on 52, like a center lane on 52?
No, there's no room for that.
Is that because of the tailbacks?
It's the volume of traffic on 52.
He's talking about the left turns out of the site.
Right.
Well, I'm sorry, at the light, there is definitely a left-hand turning lane, I'm asking if that could be extended back.
Oh, yeah, but it's not the left-hand turns into the site, it's the left-hand turns out of the site.
When you're in the site coming in, is what he's talking about.
I understand. In the center of 52, we're proposing a left-hand turn lane coming up to this site. The light up at Palin has a left-hand turn lane, why couldn't we extend that and have that as a, kind of a middle ground where a car coming out could turn into?
The DOT would not want that, that would have it where people would potentially get into that left turn lane and then want to weave into the adjacent through lane. DOT would want the traffic to be into a through lane and then move into a left turn lane typically. And the opposing traffic is the Route 52 through traffic.
I'm sorry.
I'm trying to visualize that space, is there still a turn lane there?
This is the graphic of the intersection. So there, there is a left turn lane on Route 52, and there is a left turn lane proposed here. But as I was saying, the DOT would not want vehicles coming out of a site and entering the roadway per se into a left turn lane. They would want them to enter into the, into the through traffic, because otherwise, there would be a weaving situation. In reality, they would try to get into the through traffic as well, so extending that left turn lane wouldn't be a substantial benefit.
I'm amazed they're even willing to let you have a left turn in from 52, because you can make a right on red from, so there's going to be traffic continuously coming, no matter which way the light's gone.
Understood, right, and we analyzed that, and there is a painted median there, so there's an opportunity to stripe out a left turn lane along Route 52. And in fact, when we looked at this a couple of years ago, there was comments about left turn lanes into the high school, the length of that lane. And, and we do have an opportunity to extend the eastbound, the westbound left turn lane into the high school as part of these improvements in the restriping of the roadway. We, we also looked at, at queuing as part of our analysis, and Brendan can review the queuing. The queuing along Palin Road does dissipate when the traffic signal provides the green signal. The signal is typically red along Palin Road more than half the time, and oftentimes, vehicles do approach coming southbound on Palin Road, and they do approach a red signal. And we did take a look at the speeds of the road at the driveway. I just looked at approximately 20 vehicles, and the speed at the driveway had a maximum of 35 miles per hour, because they are slowing down for the intersection. We would address any comments Brendan has, I realize he hasn't had an opportunity to a thorough review of all the minutia in our study. But we would address his comments, and overall, we believe that the access that we previously coordinated with the state and county would continue to be the best access for the site.
I was just going to reiterate that at the time this was originally approved, that non-disturbance agreement was deliberately with the intent that we didn't want these parcels to have access on Palin. So it would be nice if we had an alternative here that allowed the full access onto 52. Brendan, I understand, I understand what you're saying, and it may not be feasible, but if we, if there's a way to do that and a way to do it effectively, I'd like to, I'd like to make sure we've at least explored that and have clear reasons why it couldn't happen. Because for me, I'd much prefer that.
Sure, and I think, you know, as Rich alluded to, I did take a read through the report and looked at it, but I haven't had a chance to look at it in detail. You know, I don't know how dependent that level of service is on the level of development in the site. And also, I need to look at the, the traffic distribution, you know, to give that a reality check, to make sure that, you know, that there's not some buffer there to.
I know that, you know, Michelle, you had had some comments about how the layout might be able to be compressed a little bit to preserve more of the green space in the drainage areas and that sort of thing. And I think that a single access, full access on 52 probably helps facilitate that. So, you know, if it's not feasible, let's, let's document why exactly it's not feasible at all, and then if it is feasible, let's, let's have an alternative that shows that.
One of the things I, if I can hit on, as part of the approval for the zoning on this, the town board did allow that we would be able to shift the, we'd be able to access through this area and extend whatever our, let's say, disturbance would be to the end of it. That was something that was allowed by the town board?
Was it required?
It's allowed.
I understand allowed, I'm asking if it was required. If there's a feasible layout that doesn't require that, is that also okay?
If he needs it, he can have it.
Okay. So I want you to explore the feasibility of not having that.
Well, I think we have, we've done a number.
I haven't seen anything recent, and I understand, maybe Brendan, we just got the numbers, so we can.
Well, I just think, over the years, we've worked on these projects, this, it's been clear by the state that they do want to limit that on there, and that's, we had a meeting with the state and the county simultaneously, and these were two areas that they both agreed.
I know, but you're hearing tonight, we're doing a lot of things to change the way traffic patterns may be on this road, so if there's an opportunity to do something that's less impactful here, I want to make sure we've explored it. If other board members feel strongly differently, that's fine, but.
I support that, but I mean, how, I'm not sure how the alternate access on Palin wouldn't reduce the stress on 52, that's what I'm struggling with.
What was that question, Mike?
That the Palin access would reduce the stress on 52, wouldn't it?
Correct.
Yes. I mean, I guess there's different variations of it, and I guess there's, there's other things to consider, too. They have updated the plan to show the, Laurie, I know this was something that you had inquired about, too, they did update the plan to show the lane configuration on Palin Road. So these are considered, I mean, there's even, there's even another sub-option that could be looked at in terms of allowing rights in and rights out on Palin, and then allowing the left out onto 52. Because that, I mean, that might help the capacity, that, because there's, I mean, there's that, also that operational issue of a car taking a left out of that Palin Road access drive has to travel across three lanes to get into northbound Palin Road. And then even someone who wants to travel eastbound on 52 can take a right-hand turn, but they're taking a right-hand turn into a right-hand turn lane, and then have to navigate two lanes over to get to the signal in 200 feet in order to be able to take a left-hand turn. So those are the operational things, too, that I think that we have to look at and consider. You know, from, I mean, there's a level of service aspect to all of that, that we certainly have to consider, too, but, you know, we have to look at the functionality of it also.
Say it again? It's not proposed to go through the development, that's an emergency access, they're capping it. Right, that's still the plan?
Correct.
That's correct, that's in response to our previous meetings with the town board and the residents that came out, they were concerned with the traffic. Part of it was cut-through traffic existing for the school, some people just go through their neighborhood. And it was resolved with the town board that we would, we would make a cul-de-sac at Round Hill Road. And so those vehicles would be essentially in their own neighborhood and not interface with the site. Emergency access.
I think on the DOT, I did see that letter, wasn't it, didn't they also recommend a right turn lane into the site?
It wasn't actually recommended, Brendan, we just had that on the plan at the time, so they were just kind of commenting what we had on the plan, it was just a preliminary plan. Big picture is that the applicant had wanted us to coordinate with the county and the state before he even came to the town, so that we would have a good idea of what the county and the state wanted for their roads as, as part of this system.
One of the things that we struggle with as a planning board, though, is the town would also like to be involved in those meetings. So we understand what these other agencies might be, might be thinking, and we, you know, we understand sometimes, when you come to us without our, having had the benefit of being at those meetings, you know.
Yeah, earlier on.
Now we need to do the same due diligence to understand that.
Earlier on, years ago, when we were processing the residential.
Okay. We don't have the benefit of his experience. And what I have, what I have in front of us right now is a letter from seven years ago that just reiterates what you proposed. It doesn't actually say that they're recommending having an access on Palin. So I just want to make sure that somebody's had that discussion, because there's nothing in here that actually says we'd prefer not to have full access on 52. And I'm not disputing or questioning that you had the conversation, the problem is now we don't have a record that's showing that.
I believe we previously provided that information to Brendan. The original submission to DOT was with full access onto Route 52, and it was as a result of the initial meeting with DOT and the county that we revised our analysis to come up with.
And that's back in 2006?
That's correct. I don't believe that traffic volumes have increased substantially in the area since 2006.
Yes, I realize that. All the letter does is reiterate what the proposal is and acknowledges the proposal. It doesn't say whether or not they had a preference or didn't have a preference for the way the access ran.
Can I ask?
On the DOT letter.
Go ahead, Bob.
52 is a mess. I can see having a right-in-only from 52. Is it poss, this is off the wall, is it possible to move the extent, the entrance to Palin Road back to the edge of the property and put a light in?
Now, the volumes would not warrant the traffic signal at the Palin Road side driveway intersection. Now, the DOT has certain thresholds of minimum volumes.
So I just thought that would get rid of the 52 segment.
We tried to brainstorm everything, yeah, that's okay.
Brendan, do you agree with the statement just made that the traffic volumes have not significantly increased since 2006?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's relatively accurate. I mean, you know, because there's been a lot of things that have transpired since then. But we're going to review it, so.
Okay.
We have updated counts, we've shared those with Rich, and so we have a combination of older counts and newer counts, it's not just relying on counts that are seven years old.
Okay.
Rich, just a couple of things, I know I had asked you to potentially look at Cooper's Lane, because now all the traffic from the subdivision, even if it was going to come out to take a right onto 52, now has to come out at Palin Road and Cooper's Lane. And I know you said in your, in your report that the traffic volumes are such that they're low enough that that shouldn't be a problem, but.
Correct.
I, and I went to board to understand that, too. Actually, I don't even have a handle of how many houses are really back there, but, you know, now we have, how many? Thirty-seven, okay. And that constitutes all the, all the houses that dump out on Cooper's Lane?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And just, and I did, and I, I know from looking at it preliminarily, too, Rich did include that traffic now that has to dump out onto Palin to come down to 52 westbound. He did include that in his analysis, just so everyone's aware of that. The only other minor comment I had, looking at the plan, and it might be a question for you, Mark, I did notice that you did put a, a channelized island at the entrance onto 52. I don't see one at Palin Road.
Yeah, we just, we did that, we could, we could put it on there, we just put this line together to be able to say.
But just so, and the board understands, too, so the idea is that each of the access drives would have a channelized island that would physically or, you know, practically, physically limit you from being able to take those prohibited turns.
In addition to signing.
In addition to signing.
Michelle, I know we haven't circulated on this yet, is the plan, actually, do we, do we have any of the storm water or anything yet, or? And we don't have the alternative that shows?
We don't have a, an update of the SWIP, there was a detailed SWIP from a few years ago, but we would like to see it refreshed and brought up to the current standard, you know, the storm water manual.
Mark, have you started working on that yet? Or, okay. But we don't have it?
No, not yet, I mean, I'm, obviously, it'll change if we move, you know, to.
Entrances or something?
Yeah, entrances or.
There was that issue with the, you know, whether this is a subdivision as well as a site plan, and we think they should flesh that out for the next submission.
Okay.
Well, we think, we know, we think, we think we know, it's, obviously, it's going to be a subdivision to create a cul-de-sac. We're just, what we're asking is, how does the board want to handle the proposed, there's a right-of-way that is now going to be, does it stay with the town? The, the existing 50-foot right-of-way, does that in fact stay with the town, and do we, or do we, does it become extinguished this, this right-of-way year? And then we would convey it back, I mean, these are the questions we're kind of asking, how you want to handle it. It's more logistics, we, we know we've got to create a subdivision, which. It's more logistics. We know we've got to create a subdivision, which creates this cul-de-sac. And that would be conveyed back, but the balance of the property, what would you want us to do with it? We think we have subdivision and site plan. Just what's the disposition?
Tom was there. Do you recall if there was an intent from the town board to maintain a right-of-way there, or?
No, no.
Okay.
In fact, I mean, it's one side issue.
So we would, we would actually-
And you convey that back?
We would convey it, well, I'm sorry, Tom, would you convey-
Well, it's a road shown on a filed map, and you have houses that have been sold off the filed map.
Yeah, I don't think it affects, I don't think it affects the filed map. But I think, I mean, it's not only an HOA, but I'm wondering if-
No, I'm not saying so, but when you file a map with a road, it's all dedicated to one street.
Well, the owner, the developer still owns the road. But this is offered, still offered, I would imagine, this is offered as dedication, this strip of this 50-foot strip.
I'm sure there's an offer of dedication filed against it, but it's never been taken over as a town road.
But does the town, how do we handle this with the towns, my question? Do we get this portion of it excluded from the offer?
Well, here's the thing, is if you don't take it as a subdivision emerging, you can't count it towards your gross area, your lot coverage, or anything else, because it would be owned by the town. So if you need that area to utilize in your site, you're going to have to-
I don't think that, I don't think we're affected by that, but I'm just curious how we handle that. Do we, do we, or does developer approach the town asking for that be excluded from the offer of dedication through a meets and bounds description?
Well, right, if the board was to want, you would have to get it released. Don't you have to change the filed map? That's the question, that's the title question, if they'll have it. Okay. Sorry.
This map would be filed to create the new cul-de-sac.
Right, but then you'd have this map filed and another map filed.
On the original map.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
Okay. And I just, I just had one comment, just because we haven't quite gotten to the point, well, we may have, but Brendan hasn't completely reviewed the traffic study about the carrying capacity of the site and whether or not the, if anything needs to be, if any of the buildings need to be shrunk down or anything needs to be moved because there may or may not be, or potentially could be, traffic impacts. So that's my concern as far as declaring lead agency and circulating, because until we have that sort of set in stone and we know exactly what the size of the buildings are going to be and all that, then it may be premature. That's up to you to determine if you think there may be reasons to shrink the buildings or move things around.
Have we done anything like parking calculations? I'm hearing that this is going to be medical office space in a bank branch, so do we know whether the parking is closed?
They parked for, they parked for banking and for medical.
Correct.
They showed the parking calculation for banking and for medical. Those were the two uses that they showed on the-
Okay. And were there sufficient parking spaces? Were there more than enough? What's?
Yeah, we have enough. And I'm just, what I'm thinking is best, as Michelle points out, I'd rather Brendan and the board was comfortable with the traffic so we don't go into the hard engineering and then realize, wait, they're going to move this all around. And as Tom points out, we've got a couple of things we're going to have to check on our end. I guess that would be the best thing to do, right? In the sense of possibly next month for further discussion and, I don't know.
What I would, what I would suggest is let's have you resolve those issues. If you let Pam know. When they're resolved, you'll have a new submission. She'll put you on the next agenda.
Well, it's really more-
Well, the next, we're skipping a meeting, so the next meeting would be what?
But Brendan, what I'm saying is, once we have a new submission and you've had the time and everything, then the next-
No, no, I'm not asking them. I don't want to resubmit. What I'm thinking is, why don't you let, why don't you let Brendan finish his review?
Okay.
Do you see what I'm saying? Just so we don't continue to go further and maybe we're going down the wrong road.
Right, let Brendan see if it's feasible. If it's not feasible, then you can change the direction.
I would rather he's comfortable and obviously the board's comfortable.
Okay.
So if everybody was Mark is saying, let me, I'll review the report, will, and I'll be prepared to provide comment and, you know, and present it to the board on the sixteenth.
Okay.
Is that the right date? July sixteenth.
Okay, yeah, would that be all right? So we'd be paid, we'd place any agenda? What's that?
August sixth.
No.
August sixth.
We won't normally specifically schedule the dates of a discussion item, so as long as Brendan, you're comfortable, Pam would put it on the next available agenda. So if that's July sixteen, it's July sixteen.
But you don't need anything else for much, right, as far as submission?
Because they just submitted, I don't know if you know, they just submitted-
They submitted it on Friday.
A traffic thing on Friday, so they actually have a new submission.
Okay, so then I haven't seen that because I was out of town. Underst-, okay. All right. Now I'm understanding better.
So that'd be okay?
I think you need to get your legal issues resolved and some of these other things, too, though, with the cul-de-sac. Because come back with, here's what we want the final plan to be so that we can move you forward. I'm just-
Okay. Yeah, well, it doesn't go anywhere unless we agree on traffic, so that's kind of why I'm really saying let's-
But I also want to make sure you have your ducks in a row for the cul-de-sac and what you're going to do with that road and how-
We will, we will.
Just make sure you know what you're doing there.
I understand.
Okay. And then, Mark, if you're intending any, like, cut and fill or anything, if you're shipping on or off-site, just let us know.
Okay.
Actually, Laurie, he does, he did have some calculation in a truck, a truck trip count. We asked him to fluff up those numbers a little.
I'm just guessing it might change depending what we end up doing with entrances and all that.
But none of those businesses would be substantial deliveries, right?
No.
No.
No, 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 it's for material on and off-site.
Material. Yeah, we're talking about during construction.
Truckloads of soil.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, but I mean, okay.
For construction.
Sorry, it's late.
Okay.
So potentially July sixteenth.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, the next item on our agenda is Mission Church on Route 52.
Hi, Brian from B&amp;K Escavation.
Okay. I understand that we, we had a, and Scott, maybe you can just quickly walk us through, we had soil being moved on and off the site that we didn't expect with the permit that we had issued.
I think I was, I had some surplus material, some crushed material that I had surplus. I was in need of some topsoil, and I switched those materials out. I had finished using all the crushed material on-site. The parking lots were done, the curbs are done, the sidewalks are done for the phase that I'm in right now. I misunderstood, I guess, to some degree. When I'm, there's material that needs to come off the site. There was 3,000 yards of surplus material to the site when I took the job on. We were able to process a lot of that material and reuse it on-site and not take it off the site. About 2,000 yards, maybe a little bit more. I had taken some off and brought some back in. That raised some eyebrows, got some people upset.
I think the part you misunderstood is that anything that's processed has to be used on-site. That's the whole point of us allowing processors to use that material.
Right, but it wasn't an exact calculation.
It wasn't a misunderstanding. That night, you were specifically asked, or not asked, you were told, none of that material is supposed to go off-site.
I stated that we wouldn't take, that we weren't processing the material to use it on other projects or were we selling it? And-
No, we specifically said not moving the material off-site.
I said taken off-site. I put that in my letter, that we were using the material on that site. We have surplus material to our needs. At some point, it has to be removed to complete the project.
But you were specifically asked that night, or you could have surplus that needs to be taken off?
It wasn't, we didn't have an exact calculation as to how much material we were going to process, how much material had to be used. You go through the process, you make the material, you use it as you go. But at the end of the day, you still have to take material away to complete the job. I needed material for the job, for topsoil. There's no topsoil on that job. I had an opportunity to trade off some materials. That's what I did. It wasn't a huge amount of material. It was five loads that went out, five loads came in. The material had to come in one way or the other. At the end of the project, I still need to take 1,000 yards of material off the job.
Additional yards that you haven't done yet?
Yeah, yeah, there's still more work to be done. There's, the calculations that were put before you when the engineer got approval for the job, were way, way off. I mean, they said they were moving 351 yards of material. There's over, there's over 3,000 yards of material that needs to be removed from that site.
Okay.
How much, how many more loads are coming? Okay, five dump trucks?
Well, right now, zero, because they're not permitted to move material off-site.
We're process material, material that I process.
For that.
Okay.
We have our soil mining permit.
Sounds like we have two different things. Sounds like we have the processed issue, which none of that's supposed to leave the site. And then you have the original engineer's estimate for any surplus that had to come off the site. So what I'm hearing from Brian is that there's a bust in that estimate for whatever reason, and more additional excess material to come off the site, which, to me, potentially, they have to come back to amend their site plan for that. And, but that has nothing to do really with processed material.
Well, but it does, if the excess material you have is what you're processing.
We did that already, though.
But there's no point of processing the excess material if you're not going to use it on-site. There's no point processing.
Am I misunderstanding? Did you truck processed material off-site?
We took five loads of processed material off-site.
And you have an additional 1,000 yards that you're saying you're going to take off-site. Will that be processed or unprocessed?
No, that's when we do the next addition, and now they're talking about maybe redoing all the parking lots.
Will that be processed or unprocessed?
That will be unprocessed material.
And you need to bring it off-site, and you're estimating about 1,000?
It'll be about 1,000 yards as they comes off. But we already have our soil mining permit to do that. We have that. We got that back in December.
Well, you said it was 300 and some yards, and now it's up to it.
There, when you look at your site plan, they put a calculation at 351 yards of material that was being displaced and removed from the site.
But it was not-
I don't know where they got those calculations from. I didn't bid the job that way.
But is the soil excavation mining permit for 350 yards or for any? I think it's for the 350 yards.
No, 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 it's not, because I made, I made it very clear that there were, there was in excess of 3,000 yards of material that had to come off the site.
You weren't involved in the original?
I was involved in the soil mining permit that we got afterwards, because we didn't have to get soil mining permit with the 351 yards. You don't require it at that point.
Right, right.
You require it beyond that. That's why the project got delayed, because they didn't have that in place.
For the undercut.
Correct.
Okay, so the point is, there's no more crushing necessary? Now, is there going to be any excess, is there any excess processed material?
I won't know that until the end of the job, because there's still ongoing work. And now they want to redo all the parking lots. So we have a pile that we already put through the primary crusher, that we're going to put through the secondary crusher and put in a stockpile. Whether or not, when we're done with the project, if there's 200 yards, or 300 yards, or 400 yards of material that is going to leave, I don't know. But to not process it while we have the crusher there, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Because no matter what, at the end of the day, we have to remove material off the site.
Just take a step back, though. The board granted you permission to crush, which they didn't have to do.
Correct.
Let's go back a little further. Because of this project, the town board amended the zoning ordinance to allow crushing on-site when the material is used on-site. For this particular crack-
Correct, and in doing so-
A very first project, we're now finding out, you crush more material than you need. There's more material to be crushed that you don't need.
I made-
You want to truck it off, which is directly what the law prohibits.
And allowing us to crush, the first time that, I crushed already once prior to this, and I hauled the material off the site. I put over 200 trucks on the road to do that.
Well, it makes perfect sense.
100 trucks leaving, 100 trucks coming back in.
But the town doesn't want, the town board never-
And on this site, I already took, I already put 200 trucks on the road, bringing material off the site and then bringing it back 150 feet over the town line. We crushed it, we brought it back. As opposed to hauling it to a landfill or someplace else, purchasing material and bringing it back in.
Yeah, but again, why do you crush more than you need, though? It's a very simple, fun operation. Why crush more than you need?
We're crushing what we need to do the job, but you, as you're doing it, you know, on all projects, you put up a stockpile, and you draw from the stockpile. When we're done, we may have surplus to that stockpile.
Or you could crush a little bit less and just supplement by purchasing what you need to finish. There's another way to approach it.
Then we double up the trucks, so we put on the road one more time. We increase the carbon footprint.
Processing wasn't even a permitted thing, so when they conceived this project, processing wasn't even in the equation.
But Scott, we're hearing conflicting information, because if you're working from a stockpile, then why did material leave the site already?
Did it ever cross your mind to say, maybe I need to come back to the planning board, because I told them I would not take material off this site? Or did you say to yourself, let me do it and see if I get caught?
No, for the five loads we were taking out and the couple loads of topsoil we were bringing in, I didn't, I didn't-
There was nothing wrong with that.
I didn't think that it was going to blow up into what it did. I mean-
Because it's the first time we're using this law, and it's already screwed up.
It backfired. Okay. Scott, a couple of questions. The material has been taken off-site. Do we need, are we comfortable that it was clean? Do we need to do any testing? Is there any concern as far as that goes?
No, we're comfortable it's clean, yeah.
Okay. The soil that was brought on-site that we weren't aware of, are we comfortable that it's clean? Do we need to do testing? Do we need?
From what I understand, the source was, I'm going to say it's clean, from what I understand the source is.
Okay. Do we need to do any validation of that, or are you saying we're okay?
I think we're okay. I think Bill's taking a look at it.
Okay. You understand my concern, because part of the need to control this is to know whether or not-
It came from a SARA.
Yeah.
It's a virgin site, so it's going to be fine.
Okay.
It, you know, it's-
The reason, the other reason I'm asking is because my understanding, my recollection of what came off was large boulders that were coming from the construction of 84, so I didn't know if any, anything else was dropped in there at the time they were building that road, so just to make sure.
No, they're crushing boulders.
So now, let's, let's look at where we are today. We still have this permit in place. Have you stopped work on that permit or rescinded that permit?
We have not stopped work. No, we're, that's why we're here discussing it.
Okay, so you are still currently crushing on that site?
We have about one day of crushing when the crusher's fixed. There's been a problem with the crusher, an ongoing problem with it, with the circuit board.
But you have, you have further-
What do you have to?
We don't know that we have, how much surplus we have, because they want to redo all their parking lots now. They're realizing that the parking lots that they have are insufficient, that they're falling apart, they're crumbling. They weren't constructed properly in the beginning. So we're putting a proposal together for them to rebuild all the parking lots, the existing parking lots that weren't going to be paved before, that weren't going to be reconstructed.
Are they going to match the existing site plan, or are you coming back to this with an amended site plan?
No, they're going to match the existing site plan. They're just going to be reconstructed to the same fashion that they are now, but properly, with the right item four and with the right amount of asphalt.
The risk is, they crush the material and they deny the proposal, and now you've got even more excess.
Well, what I'm hearing is there isn't going to be a proposal.
I still need to remove the material off the site. The benefit to crushing it is that we don't move material twice. We don't take material off, have to find a home for it, wherever that might be, and then have to truck material in from several miles away.
No, but if you just have boulders that you're trucking off, to me, that's disposal, okay? Versus a processed material, now you're in the quarry business on-site.
I'm not, I'm not in the quarry business.
Selling item at the end of the job, because the item has a value that boulders do not have.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not selling it. I'm not selling the material. If I, if I remove the material-
But you're taking it to another job, and there's a value in that. You could look us in the eyes and say, make a dime off of this?
Well, there's a value to, there's a value to boulders to some degree if I find the right client for them. Or topsoil, for that matter, if it's a surplus to a job, you know, any material has a value to it.
But all that did not require special permit, though, that the processing did. So it's apples and oranges.
Can I ask a kind of dumb question? If the original estimates had been what they are now, would we have said yes, with the special permit or not?
I thought the special permit didn't allow trucking off-site. Wasn't that the whole point?
They had the permit, trucking material off-site.
Raw material.
Right, because we didn't allow crushing. Then the town board, because of the Mission Church project, amended the zoning ordinance. They came back to you. You amended the permit in good faith to allow them to crush boulders that they had on-site so they could use it all on-site. It was all done in a good faith manner to assist this project. Then, of course, no good deed goes unpunished.
Of course. It wasn't done intentionally. It wasn't done to stir up this hornet's nest that I've done.
If they had said in the beginning-
I wasn't trying to poke anybody.
That they were going to crush additional material and have to haul it off-site, would we have said yes or no? I would suspect we would have said yes. You don't know what the numbers are when you say question?
I know, but 1,000, 2,000 yards. We probably would have said yes.
All right, and the five truckloads is starting to smell a little bit much. You can look us in the eye and say, you didn't make a dime off of that.
No, no, I didn't, I didn't make money off of it. I brought topsoil back in. It was a trade-off.
Because he would have had to pay for the topsoil. I mean, clearly, the resolution says material must come from the site and be used on the site for the processed material.
Well, and now that we're aware that maybe there's a calculation issue, maybe the solution tonight is that there be no more crushing at this moment until a recalculation of material is done in a suitable fashion and a plan is given to you to decide how it's going to end.
But what's the punishment here?
We make them some on the six. That's the punishment.
No, no. You're way past my bedtime now.
Yeah. Because the next time this comes in, we're going to-
Right, what's the control? How do we make sure this doesn't happen?
Well, I mean, I...
I thought we did. Personally, I can't see...
I know.
Exactly.
Given the benefit of the doubt that it was a misunderstanding, personally, I don't see there should maybe be a fine for this instance. But I also think anything that he crushes, that he may or may not use on-site, if he doesn't use it, he's crushing it at his own risk, and he has to lose it on-site.
He's got to find a place to put it.
But then that's the punishment. You can't truck the rest of it off-site.
I don't think it's too per fine right now. I don't...
That sounds like kind of harsh to make an ugly site when it could be used someplace else.
Like I say, I've got one day left. The material's already going through a primary crusher. We've got one day of crushing left to put up the surplus material. I shouldn't say, use the word surplus, excuse me, to put up another stockpile.
The material that you're going to use for the parking lots that you may or may not have in our vote.
For the additional parking lots that they want to redo.
Are they definitely redoing it?
They have to look at the numbers and see if they have the money in their budget when they're done with what they're doing now.
So you want...
I would say that they have to do it, because the parking lots are...
Junk.
It's garbage. I mean, you know, you...
I know they didn't have money in the budget for emergency backup generator. I know they didn't have money for that, which I thought was important, but...
But they can't leave the parking lots the way they are. I mean, they're just...
Honestly, I haven't seen them.
So I think what you're hearing is that if you crush the rest of the material you have on-site, it needs to be used on-site. So if they don't go forward with the parking lots, you're comfortable you're going to have a place to put that material back into the site somewhere?
We're recording this.
That it can't be removed from the site.
Well, you can't just leave... You can't just change grades. I mean, you know, the material, at some point, the material has to leave, unless you want me to leave a mound somebody's...
Then you bring the crusher back. I don't know.
Yeah.
Resolution is the resolution.
Scott, I'm conscious of the fact that we don't have another meeting now for about thirty days. Is this... I'm concerned. I mean, we don't know if a parking lot's going in. We don't know what's happening with the rest of the material on-site. In the next thirty days, if that material disappears, this board won't be meeting.
This is the first project. Now, what happens to the next project, the next project, the next project, when people just crush for it?
I think this should be...
And then, hey, I don't need it. I can get rid of it.
The difference is, when you have a project where you can foresee that you're going to use the materials and you're going to be able to recycle materials on a site and keep the carbon footprint down like we're supposed to, and keep the trucks off the road like we're supposed to...
Which is what we were told for this project.
Then that's what we try to do. But there's no guarantees at the end of the day that you don't have cer... There's no guarantees at the end of the day that you don't have surplus material. And no matter what, like I say, the material has to be removed at some point. So if you can take the majority of the material and use it on-site in a practical manner, then I think that's the best thing to do in all scenarios.
Would you agree...
If there's enough volume there to make it worthwhile.
Would you agree that in the ideal situation, then, no material should have left this site until the end of the project, when you actually knew what the surplus was?
If I, yes, if, yes, I do.
Deficit was?
Yes, I do. At this point, I absolutely do. Because for five loads of topsoil, this is not worth it.
See, but that's the problem, yeah. You kind of probably figured yourself for five loads of topsoil.
Yeah, but if you didn't have the five loads of topsoil, from what I'm hearing, you would have had this excess, and you would have trucked off that excess at the end. So maybe instead of five loads, it might have been, I don't know, you tell me how many loads, a thousand yards?
Of what?
If you didn't truck the topsoil off, and we're not sitting here discussing this, okay?
He trucked the processed materials off.
Excuse me, excuse me, vice versa. A month from now, when they say, "No to the parking lots," you're trucking off five hundred or a thousand yards of material. And only if we happen to see you doing that are we even having a sense of discussion. So it's a good thing that the five loads happened now, so we can talk about it.
In a month from now, I'm still going to truck off that same five hundred yards of material. The difference is, I'm not going to use it in a practical way. I'm going to have to find a hole for it someplace.
Or you could haul it someplace else and crush it there, because it's still rock. Rock is...
No, at that point, it doesn't make it worth it, unless, logistically, the projects are close enough together. But at that point, I've got to find a hole someplace for it. I've got to haul it someplace, and I've got to lose it.
So if you process it, you're going to haul it?
So if you process material and you have a surplus, at least you can take that material and put it to the right application.
Which is great for a contractor, but we're not catering to contractors.
It's good for everybody. It's good for the environment. It's not just good for the contractor. You're not running the quarries, pulling mountains down, when you have a project that...
But here's the rule of law. The rule in East Fishville was no processing. We changed it for this. We said you can process it if it stays on-site. The first application has to go out the wall.
So, Tom, do we revoke this permit and just say, "No more processing"?
My suggestion was that you not process, that there be a recalculation of the material there, and then we figure out what the appropriate thing is, and then we have to look at it to see what the violation is.
And if we could understand whether or not the parking lots will be redone? I think that's the right next step.
If that's...
If you stop crushing now, it means we have a big pile of rock, which you're allowed to haul any place and dump.
I'm going to haul it off. I'm going to be done with it.
Right, you're going to haul it off. If you crush it, it can at least go to a useful purpose and save the rock.
Exactly. Hold on a second. You can't just haul it off the site.
No, I can, because I have that permit to haul the material off the site, because it's surplus to our needs. And it's, so in the form it's in, I can haul it off, and I will have to haul it off. But if I am allowed to crush for one more day, there's the potential to use it.
So it gets hauled either way, one way it gets used, one way it gets dumped?
Regardless of that, personally, I have no problem with that. Personally, I don't have a problem if they had excess processed material and selling it to whoever. The problem I have is they violated the permit.
Right, exactly.
And that's where the problem...
I understand that.
But Jason, I agree with you. What we're hearing tonight, though, is we don't know if we're going to use it. We're not sure if the parking lots are going to be redone.
Yes.
We might be trucking it off, we might not. We're not sure what...
That's right.
I would like to not do anything else until we know what the plan is.
Yeah, and I agree.
I agree.
That's all I'm saying.
We're definitely hauling it off if we don't get the one more day to crush, because at that point, in order to remobilize and bring that machine back in, where now, you know, it's going to cost me fifteen hundred dollars to crush it, if I bring the machine back, it's ten thousand dollars. That's not going to happen. So if I don't get granted the one more day to finish the stockpile...
He crushes his one day. He pays a fine of a thousand dollars for the trucks he took out. It's his punishment. And then, before he removes any other material, we get a handle on how much it is and what permits still have. That way, he can crush.
And I'm a little bit confused how we have a permit that says you can't haul the processed rock off-site, and we have another permit that says I can take off all the material I want. So I need to understand that, too.
Right, we have to see that straight now. And then, if there is material at the end, he comes back with it, and you'll have to take it off.
I made a mistake by taking the five loads off. That's my mistake. I made a mistake. I apologize for that, but...
So there's a compromise.
I mean, I'm not going to pay... I'm not going to pay a thousand dollars to crush that material another day.
So then tomorrow, if this stop work order will be placed on the property...
Well, I'm just not going to crush.
No more crushing, and we'll verify as to whether or not your permit allows you to remove anything. And if it does, fine. If it doesn't, we'll be back there.
I don't understand why you'd put a stop work order forward on the project if I'm not going to crush.
Because we have a violation?
No, not the project, the crushing.
No, you...
We're not going to stop the project. Just the crushing.
Okay, so you're going to say we can't crush?
And you can't remove material from the site until we get a handle on what else is left going on?
Well, we already have a soil mining permit to remove the material.
But there's a limit to that, and we don't know how much you've taken out. You already snuck five trucks out.
There wasn't, there's not a limit to the soil mining permit.
I think there is.
No, the limit is, you're mixing things. There's a soil mining permit for the undercut under the building, and then there's the crushing permit for material to be used on-site. So while you can haul rock out from the site...
Or dirt, or topsoil, or clay, or any other materials that come off the site.
It's the material that you're processing on this site, and if I don't use it here, maybe I'll use it someplace else. That's the rub right there.
Right. Scott, was there a limit in the permit for removal of materials to how much could be removed? Or was that just an open, take four thousand trucks if you want?
Well, for raw material, no, there was an estimate on the raw material. Yeah, raw material. There was an estimate.
Okay, so do we have an idea of how many, how much raw material's been removed?
Not off the top of my head, but there was...
Laurie, I think we should have some numbers, because we had some of that back and forth in our letters and correspondence with the engineer.
My question is, do we know how much material's already been removed, raw material?
No.
Has any been removed?
No raw material has been removed, because we were able to utilize it on the site, which I think is a great thing, that we didn't have to haul the material off. But we did put this oil mining permit in place so that we could remove in excess of three thousand yards of material that we thought had to leave. But we were able to reuse that material on the site.
The town justice figured that out. We'll just have the violation issue, and we'll let the town justice figure it out.
What if he stops?
Well, he can't go forward, though, right?
He's already violated the law. I mean, it has nothing to do with whether he stops or not.
I'm good with that. I make a motion that we defer.
Well, there's no motion for it, because there's a discussion. It's a, now, it's truly going to be just a reclamation proceeding. But obviously, he can't crush it, because there's no need for the crushing material on-site.
And if we decide we're going to redo the parking lots, and there is a need for that, if you can just come back and explain it, then...
At that point, it won't be economically feasible to do it, because it'll cost too much money to bring that, to bring those machines back in.
You'll bring in...
So we'll have to haul the material in, we'll have to haul off the pile that we have that's prepared to be crushed. So I have one...
As an informed third party listening to all this, what if you crush it, and it never leaves the site? You use it, if you don't use it, you lose it.
That's what I'm saying.
But how do you just lose material on a site? How do you just lose...
That's what we said to him, and he said he can't just put it on the site.
Take material out somewhere else and put it there. I mean, you take a...
You can't, you can't, you can't dig an inch in the ground without pulling up rocks the size of that table.
Well, I guess that's something you've got to try to...
I mean, if the town said, "I can put it over by the well casing and leave it in the field," then that's one thing, but then, you know, there's a pile sitting out there in no man's land.
I don't think we want a pile. You've got to see if you can put some kind of lift somewhere, you know?
The practical side of me, Scott...
I won't figure it out. You'll have to come up with a proposal.
But it's going to...
The practical side of me says it's crushing the rest of it.
What it would do is it would put me outside my limits of disturbance.
So it's usable in the event that they can use it on-site.
Because I am in such a tight boundary, and we are using every bit of that property.
Is that...
You know, they own property, but it's outside the limits of disturbance.
Churches are not rich.
Are we talking, when you say limits, are we not talking about having to approach in a wetland area?
No, no, no.
It's just outside the limits of disturbance.
It's outside the limits of disturbance.
They did a sweep, so, I mean, why can't we expand the limits of disturbance?
Because it's...
The question...
Would it require clearing?
No. No, there's a field where, I guess, they're proposing another addition at some point in the future, if they ever get the funding for it.
How much would it increase the cost of the parking lots that they're considering if you just dump this material as-is? And then you have to bring in crushed material to rebuild them?
How much more is it going to cost?
Yeah, it's going to cost them a considerable amount more.
It's going to cost them probably an additional twenty-five thousand dollars to...
So it makes sense to get the crusher back?
Can I just say again?
No, because I'm going to make the money anyways.
It's going to be a matter of the estimate, and then whether it gets done or not.
It's going to add to their estimate. It's, right, exactly.
They're not in a position to, like, make a decision on these parking lots within the next twenty-four hours?
Me?
No, the church.
No.
They're not.
No, nothing happens that quick in the church. Absolutely nothing.
Are you expecting you'd have a decision in the next three days?
I can only see them redoing the parking lots. I mean, they're potholes, they're torn up, they're... It's a spider web in there. They're horrible.
Okay.
They can't do all this work, spend four million dollars on what they're doing, and not spend another sixty thousand dollars to rebuild the parking lot, or fifty thousand, whatever it costs them.
Then I want to strongly recommend that you spend the extra day and crush the material and agree that it doesn't go anywhere until you've come back and talked to us. And if they aren't going to do the parking lots, we'll figure out what to do with it then. And if they are, use as much of it as you can. And you're still going to come back to us with whatever's left, unless it's just something you can nominally spread on the site. Is that...
I'm in full agreement with that.
Okay.
That's not a problem.
Tom...
There's zero punishment.
Hold on, hold on.
I've got one I want to throw in.
All right, I just want to make sure there's a punishment here. So when the next person does this, we're going to tell them about the punishment.
I'd also like you to bring your employer back with you the next time.
I am the employer.
No, the church.
Oh.
Because you've left a very bad taste in the board's mouth.
It wasn't intentional. It truly wasn't. I was merely trying to get some decent topsoil to...
I know, we've heard that story. We've been talking about it for the last half hour. I think they have some behind it.
The trucks came in just as much as they went out.
That's the whole point, though.
No, I'm talking about the topsoil. No matter what, we had to bring topsoil. We have to import topsoil to do the job. There's no topsoil to be had on this job. It's, you know, you just bounce off of rocks.
So we get one more day, and comes back with the plan for...
And leave it on-site in a pile until you know what you're going to do with it?
It'll be stockpiled on-site until I come back before the board again to see what we're going to do with it when we're done.
And I think it should be like...
Crusher broke?
There's been a bad circuit on the crusher. It's a...
I'm sorry.
A problem with all the machines that they have.
I think that once the pile is made, it should be, I mean, they can measure the pile. They can put a fence or steel fence or something around it that we can make sure that nothing leaves until he comes back. I think that should be done.
Okay, and maybe if the town can be notified on the day you're able to crush again, your machine's broken, is that...
The machine's down, yeah.
And so when you're done with that, the town would like to come, or you need to let us know, so that we can be there, we can take a picture if we need to, so we know whether or not that pile's changed before you come back to us.
Right, now, we will be utilizing that material on the site still throughout the other phases of construction, because we're, in three weeks, we're going to dig the next addition for the building. And we'll be utilizing some of that material there for backfilling the walls and, you know, the subbase for the floors and things of that nature.
I think you'll give us a schedule so we can monitor. We don't want to drag there just to see what you're doing.
You know, the pile will be depleted.
You're going to need to notify Scott's office every day that you're changing that, then? Okay?
What do you think of the idea of going back on the church?
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. I think we need to understand, too, if there's going to be any site changes. I would think if you're redoing a parking lot, there may be something a little bit different about your site plan. I don't know. about your site plan. I don't know.
The, well, redoing the parking lot is not changing the elevations or anything of that nature in the parking lot. It's bringing it back to the way it was originally, when it, when it was originally built, just in a, in the proper manner.
Okay.
Because there's no subbase underneath the parking lot now. That's why it's in the condition it's in.
Any drainage in that parking lot?
Two catch bases. In the, in the old parking lot.
The old parking lot?
Correct.
Are those being redone? Or are you going to tear it up?
There's all new drainage in there now.
In the old part?
It goes through the old parking lot, yes. Yeah, the old parking lot has five catch bases. That was, actually, we just added two more. There's seven new catch bases in the, in the old parking lot.
And that matches the site plan that we have on file?
Correct.
With the changes.
Correct.
Bless you, Tom. All right, so go ahead and finish the processing.
And again, I'm sorry for whatever, you know, the problems I caused here.
I understand. That's fine. We appreciate you saying that.
It wasn't, you know, it wasn't a whole thousand yards off. I didn't, for, again, I guess it doesn't matter if it was one load, five loads, or 10 loads.
I think what I'm understanding clearly is that to you, it was insignificant. And that means that we have to do a better job the next time somebody asks for a permit like this of explaining the consequences and why we have this the way we have it.
Right.
So we'll, we'll accept this as our one learning experience.
But there's still going to be consequences, right?
Who's from the church is coming back with you?
What we're, what we're suggesting is that...
No, I know what we're suggesting.
I have no idea.
What we're suggesting is that we'll finish crushing. You said you have one more...
The church doesn't really get involved.
Yeah, they will now.
They will.
They...
Because that's where...
I know. I'm waiting until...
What do you think about asking someone from the church, the pastor, to come back?
Why?
Let him see this all.
Well, this is an application of...
There will have to be.
Why? It doesn't serve any purpose except to, you know, to say, beat him up and say, "Your contractor screwed up." I mean, what's the guy going to say? Make him come here and, you know, act apologetic? I just, I just don't understand the purpose of asking the pastor of the church to come here.
Okay, let's wrap this up. What we're asking you to do, and I want to make sure you're comfortable with this, and we'll have it reflected in our minutes. We'll make a motion. We'll pass that motion. Tom, if you think we should have a revised, if we need to do anything to revise the permit because of this, we're going to instruct you that you're okay to crush the rest of the material you need to crush. You feel it's going to take one day, we'd like you to notify Scott's office on the day that you're doing that so he can, if he's able, it'll have somebody out there to observe it. Anytime you're going to take materials from that pile, you're going to let us know again through Scott's office. And then if the town wants to come out, we can monitor what's being changed at the site and what's, what's changing with that rock. And then at the end of this project, you'll let us know if there's material left, what you need to do with it. If it's nominal and you're going to spread it on the site, we don't need to hear from you. But if there's significant material left, you need to come back.
Correct.
Okay. Scott, is there anything else that we need to do in terms of monitoring this going forward? Anything you would recommend? And how do we want to handle the question of whether or not this will be used with the parking lot and possible changes to the parking lot once it's pulled up and redone?
I think you've got to come back once they have the answer.
Okay. So if you are going to be redoing the parking lot, we would still like to see you again and just let us know what you're doing. And let's make sure that the site plan you have is what, what matches our...
Does he have to come back or does the applicant have to come back? He's not the applicant.
We'll, we'll address that.
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
And, no, back to the punishment. Tom, is there going to be a review of this or...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
All set.
Okay. Do you have any questions for us? Are you clear what you're going to do?
No, I, I understand.
Okay. If you need more than one day's crushing, if there's something else that happens or some other change, please let Scott know before you're taking action and so that if it needs to come before us, we know that. We don't enjoy this any more than I'm sure you enjoy this. But we need to understand when we issue permits and things like that, they need to be abided by. So that's why we're, that's why we're talking to you about it. And hopefully, we've...
Right, but again, I, it wasn't my intent to violate a permit or to do anything underhanded or anything else.
Okay. Are you comfortable with where we are right now? That you'll finish the crushing and you're going to let us know anytime you're changing that pile?
We'll put the stockpile up and we'll leave it on site. And at the end of the project, before we walk out the door, I'll come back in. And if the pile can't be lost on site, we'll discuss removing it or whatever we have to do with it at that point.
Okay. Please stay in touch with Scott as you're doing this at the site with it.
And other materials, you know, that fall under our soil mining permit, we'll still be hauling those off and disposing them.
And if you are doing that, my strong advice to you is to just also email or give Scott's office a call so that we don't have concern that we see trucks and we think it's something that it's not. So just, if you're, if you're transparent with us, well, I hate using that word. I'm sorry. If you share with us and just let us know what you're doing, I think things will go smoothly from here on out.
But, well, I mean, Scott doesn't want me to call him every time I'm bringing a load of sand or something else in or out of the job, right? I mean, you...
No, I just want to know what your schedule is, what your activities are. Give me a two-week schedule.
Correct.
Yeah, I think we do want to know if there's anticipated trucking in and out of the site.
I'm not going to drive up there if we don't, don't need to.
Right. But I mean, if we're taking boulders out and things of that nature.
Oh, yes.
I just think you should give Scott's office a schedule.
I think the risk you run is that, to a degree, you're going to be in the honor system. And if we find any of that stuff leaving the site when it shouldn't be, the project will be shut down, just so we're crystal clear.
Correct. No, I fully understand.
That means the tapers, the carpenters, the roofers, the projects. So I think that's enough of a warning to...
Right.
All right.
And I've got a, you know, I've got a reputation to uphold at the same time, so...
That should be enough.
That's not going to happen.
Yep.
We appreciate you coming in and explaining, please live up to this end, then you'll be fine.
Okay.
All right.
All right, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is Parkview Three Lots on Oak Ridge Road.
And that's what we'll say for the next one, is that the project will be shut down.
Will be shut down.
I think it'll go right in the resolution of the permit. And there will maybe some penalty or something like that built into the resolution. First one. I mean, we'll learn as we go, but...
Can you leave that easel here when you're done?
Actually, we're buried back there. No, that one's broken.
It's broken.
That's why we need to...
What's the incentive? Really?
Hi, good evening. My name's Ken Carney.
Can we just turn it just a little bit so we can have the...
Sorry.
Thank you.
I just want to give a brief introduction. Our company has never worked in this town before. I'm Ken Carney. I'm here with my son, Sean Carney, and Rich Williams from Insight. We are developers in the Hudson Valley. We primarily develop senior housing. We've developed probably about 300 units in Dutchess County in the last six or seven years. Our focus is Dutchess County and northern Westchester. What we have been doing is finding smaller projects. We build our own projects. We have our own construction company. So what we do is we look for smaller projects that we can use when the larger projects slow down and to try to keep some of our, our men working. Like I said, we do our own construction. We think we're pretty good at it. We develop, we construct, and we manage, although management is not an issue here. So I just want to introduce ourselves, and I'll turn it over to Rich. Thank you.
You're processing any material? Now we got that cleared, now.
Good evening. As Ken said, my name is Rich Williams. I'm with Insight Engineering. And we're before you this evening for a three-lot subdivision located on Oak Ridge Road. The site is a 3.1 acre piece of property, and it's in the R1 zoning district. I've rendered a copy of the preliminary subdivision plan that's was before you on the easel. You can see the overall property line. Oak Ridge Road forms the southern boundary. This is the end of Oak Ridge Road, it turns into a cul-de-sac. The western boundary of the property is the Metro North right away. To the north, you have the Oak Ridge subdivision. And the eastern boundary is a single-family residential property.
Okay.
As I said, we're looking to create a three-lot subdivision. Each lot will be roughly one acre. All of the lots will be serviced by individual driveways. There will be access from Oak Ridge Road. Each lot will have an individual drilled well and its own subsurface sewage treatment system. There's no local or DEC on-site wetlands. There's no floodplains, and there's no steep slopes on the property.
There's no steep slopes, I'm sorry, based on...
The definition of steep slope.
No, but, but this topography, this is aerial or did you do a hard topo on the property?
This is field shot.
Field shot?
Yes.
I don't know that we caught that. Did we get the field shot topo?
I believe you did. It is on this plan.
The original plan?
It should be.
So my understanding is the original was aerial. So we just need to clean that up.
Yeah, I'll have to double-check our submission, but I believe you submitted the field shot stuff.
Okay.
So there's no steep slopes on the property either. It should be a simple and straightforward subdivision application. And we're here tonight on our first appearance to get comments from the board and your staff and consultants.
So this is in an existing subdivision? And it was a remaining lot or just a lot that was never built? Or what was the genesis of having this land?
The history, as we see it, I believe the, one of the original developers of this area, he deeded this property over to his two daughters back in 1960. And they really didn't do much with it. One daughter married, one daughter didn't. They lived in the Poughkeepsie area, and they had it for over 50 years, and they never did anything with it. So it was the remnants of a filed map going back to 1960.
So it was one lot under 1960?
Yep. The deeds...
And so the subdivision that's around it, I mean, this is a cul-de-sac that seems to clearly have this as a lot on the cul-de-sac. So it seems like, was that cul-de-sac from 1962 or is it 1960 as well or...
Ma'am, I'm, I'm not sure about that. I know what I read in the deeds, but in the deeds, I believe it did talk about the legal description of the cul-de-sac. So I, I don't, I think the original intent, we don't know. But if he deeded it to his two daughters, but they, like I said, they, they never moved forward with any, any building plans at all.
There are lots on the other side of the cul-de-sac, right? Where the houses were built?
Yes, yes.
That's what I'm saying. It seems like there's a whole subdivision built around it, so...
It's kind of weird. It's like they just carved out a chunk instead of giving it to my daughters in case they want.
Okay.
And they said no, and they sold it to your guys.
That's what it seems like.
Yeah.
Is there a note on the plan from the surveyor what the date was that the topography was done?
Also...
Is field work...
January 31st?
January 31st, 2013, it was performed by my office. And again, that should be on your submission. Okay, but it says topography. Topography shown here on is basically actual field work performed by Incited here in surveying and asking for confirmation completed January 31st, 2013. Okay, thank you. It is field shot topo. It is, your submission. Thank you.
Okay. The zoning here is R1, so one acre zoning. You said it's 3.1 acres total, and you have three lots. Are all of them at least one acre?
Yes.
Okay.
They're really close.
Is there any other access to this site besides the Carol Drive Bridge?
No.
So it too is going to play the game of getting construction vehicles over that bridge. And we don't, we don't have that bridge report.
We can sort of give you an update. I can give you an update. I mean, basically, the report does say that the bridge rates.
The bridge...
It rates, it rates in terms of, you know, normal, highly loaded. But it does have some identified vulnerabilities and maybe, you know, maybe flooding and the type of...
Okay. So...
You know, I'm not, I'm not sure how familiar you are with the issue of this area. But, you know, I don't, I, you know, we can fill them in on it. I mean, there's probably 70, am I correct, and about 70 houses in there? 84? 84 houses. But they all have, they all have access from Carol Drive. It's the only access point to those 84 houses. Goes across a timber bridge structure that has been identified with some vulnerabilities.
Okay.
So, you know, there's, there's another project located in this vicinity, a bigger project. But, you know, we're looking to try to find some secondary access to this area. It's the only way in. And it dovetails into other work that the town is doing in hazardous mitigation studies for the whole area. So, I mean, that's kind of it in a nutshell. But, you know, any, any, any increase in the number of homes that are in this area are going to exacerbate the situation, however minor it might be. It's, you know, three houses is three more houses.
Yeah, and I think you hit it on the head. And it's, you know, it is a minor increase. It's three out of 84 is a very small percentage.
Right, we're just, the concern was truck traffic.
For construction, because this bridge is...
Well, I'll tell you what, next time you go out there, stop and take a look.
I've driven over it. Actually, I know the bridge you're referring to.
Take a look underneath.
But that's the only way in.
Have you ever driven it when water was over top of it?
I have not. But I, I would imagine this has got to be on the town's short-term program because if it's an issue for construction vehicles, it's got to also be an issue for your fire department. Are there any...
One, one of the things that we're looking at, and again, we have another project that also would only be accessed potentially through, through this bridge. We're, we're looking at, is there ways to mitigate that? And with the other project, there may be ways to have alternative emergency access. That's what we're looking for. This project may not facilitate that. But we need to make sure that we accommodate for the increased traffic over the bridge, the potential construction traffic that might be generated from this project. So I think those are discussions to be had. You should just be aware of it because this is unusual that it's, this whole area is like one big cul-de-sac. So, you know, normally, we don't allow cul-de-sacs that long. It's an existing condition, but we're, we're very cautious to have any exacerbation of that condition without knowing or having a plan for that bridge or an alternate access.
That's a good point. And I think, you know, as we look to move forward, one of the things we can talk about is construction techniques, not processing on site, but balancing earthwork to minimize trucks in and out and seeing what we can do.
We don't want to discourage you from processing on site if it's appropriate. You do it the right way.
But we can, we can look at, you know, construction techniques to try and minimize any vehicle traffic, and it certainly is a good conversation that we'll...
The other...
Now, is there any... Oh.
Well, just the, the other, the other thing that's been identified by the other project is a pretty significant site distance issue at the intersection of Oak Ridge Road and Carol Drive. So, I mean, that is the access route to, to here. So even on, on that other project, you know, there's been some discussion about, you know, some type of fair share contribution to eventually try to take care of that problem. So even, and the bridge might fall under that same category, so...
Does that fall under fair share of all users, new and existing?
Yes.
So it would be...
And Brendan, I guess I should ask one, you're bordering an MTA right-of-way, is that what you said?
Metro North, yes.
So that's probably not a viable...
I'm not familiar enough to even know what's on the other side in terms of...
I mean, I'm just thinking, I mean, if there's a way, I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. We can, we can look at it. I don't even know what's on the other side.
Just in terms of emergency, not for, obviously not for construction travel. I just mean, if it's, if there's anything there that allows us any kind of an emergency travel way. Okay.
Rich, the only other minor comment that I, I had is on the opposite side of the road, there's houses and driveways. And, you know, even, even if it was from an aerial, the locations of those houses and driveways could be identified, just to see where the proposed driveways are lining up.
So we don't necessarily have headlights shining into...
So we don't have headlights in somebody's living room. Or if we can, at all, any potential to align the proposed driveway with an existing driveway, you know, it's just, it's just good, good planning practice, so that's...
We can do that?
Michelle, any...
I noticed your septic system's a large. Of course, it's mostly rock, isn't it?
We actually have done soil testing, and we found suitable soils for septic.
You did?
We did. And that was one of the first thing we did in performing feasibility study to see if it was even feasible to pursue a subdivision. Thank you.
I'm just, as per usual, we'll probably end up with an Indiana bat. But the site, I don't know if you're familiar with these, which is still being like the Indiana bat center of the world. So...
Should I mention I saw a turtle in my backyard over the weekend?
Hope you didn't catch it. Hope you didn't touch it.
Half the yard's not mowed right now because of it.
So DEC will likely be an involved agency, just because we don't know whether or not they'll require an install take permit or not. And so when we circulate, we should probably circulate for lead agency. In this particular case, even if they were to have to reduce a lot, it would still be worst-case scenario, thus present plans. I don't think we have to wait for any site layout changes necessarily.
But just the restriction on development?
Or they're just going to restrict on the time of year?
Right, yeah, that's the typical.
So, so we could probably declare your intent to be lead agency, so they can circulate, and I think the MTA should be an interested agency, because they're buying the property.
I know we've, we've also just recently had some more experience with the Hudsonia study, are you familiar with that?
I'm not.
It looks at the different, what's the right, habitats that we have within the town? So if you would also look at that Hudsonia study, identify if there's any habitats on your land or, or in close proximity to-
On this one, I did, because I anticipated that. And there, it is shown in the Hudsonia map as already a subdivided lot, so it's actually shown as, as no habitat, because it was already laid out as a, so they probably, when they were looking at-
As a single lot?
As a single lot.
They're saying a single lot, but they, they probably were looking at it as already an existing subdivision with already existing development on it.
Okay.
So there's no habitat information in this location.
Okay, then never mind.
Never mind, we don't have any on the web.
You just work that out all day.
Yeah, we haven't circulated yet, so we're-
Yeah, well, I know, back in February, but- Was that a B comment?
Okay. So Michelle, did you say we're ready to circulate, are we complete enough?
Yeah, declare your intent to be lead agency.
To circulate, or to-
No, no, just declare your intent to be lead agency.
I can't tell what you guys were talking about, so.
Do tell.
Are we okay? Okay, so we need to declare our intent to be lead agency, so is there circulation, or is there no circulation with that?
Well, they're going to have to provide the EAF and then circulate it around and to all the interested involved, and they'll let you know if they have any issues with you being lead agency, basically.
Okay, so can I have a motion to declare our intent to be lead agency? Second, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay.
Thank you. Do you need an, is the EAF that was in our submission package already sufficient, or do you need?
Yeah, that should be fine, and I'll check, I'll check, I think you had identified all the, the only thing I wanted added was MTA as an interested agency.
Okay, we can do that.
And was, and DEC was already listed, right?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Alright, any other questions or comments from board members? Do you have any other questions for us?
No.
I just had a couple of comments.
Oh, sure, Scott, I'm sorry.
One, typically, on a cul-de-sac like that, we would potentially be looking at a snow easement for highway. I don't know if there's anything on the other side, opposite you, but that's something we'll be looking at, potential snow easement. Typically, we get the 25-foot from center line for right-of-way dedication, so I don't know where it's a little tight, whether you've got that or not, you may or may not. And then the cul-de-sac will also take a look at that, because that distance requirement's a little bit greater, so I'll put it in writing what you need to look at, so.
Okay, great.
Will that broke in on our file map, or this is just a-
We have to look into that.
And then with that, you know, that second lot there, I don't know if you've looked at, maybe flipping that driveway just to improve your site distance around that curve, but- Maybe if you open up the-
Which actually just reminded me of probably one other thing. You should actually put a table on the plan to identify the site distance of the driveways, to ensure that we meet the state, the town code.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott.
Scott, do we need to have an engineer officially appointed for this application?
We're going to do this in-house.
You're going to do it in-house, okay, so is, I know we still have to circulate, that's going to be at least 30 days, but are we okay to set this for public hearing, or do we need to wait and see one more round?
We still have a site distance issue. I think we need to know where the driveways are going to be, all that must have should be there before we let the public review the site plan.
So we'll probably have you back for one more discussion after you resolve those items, and then we'll schedule you for public hearing. In the meantime, if we can circulate? That takes 30 days, so.
Very good.
Okay.
You can, I can give you my card, and you can contact me if you have any questions, and what you'll do is when you do the circulation, we have a specific format we usually use, and I can help you with that.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for us?
No.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Sorry to keep you out so late, you don't usually go this long.
I have to warn you, you may not see it again.
That wasn't our intent, believe me.
There's a lot of us, you might not see it again.
Very nice, Mike. Is, is Homesteads here?
It looks like it.
Okay.
I make a motion that we find another proposal to fill that slot.
Well, we do have a discussion I'd like to bring up on changing our meeting times and potentially starting, and actually, tonight's probably a really good time to discuss this, potentially starting at 7 o'clock instead of 7:30.
This is just the, I'm sorry that the, when I printed it out on the, on the new work, you know, the computer printed out a different word format, so the top planning board inspection thing. This is a new cover letter for the planning board application.
Okay, so Pam, can I just clarify, Homesteads is not here? Okay. Did they know we, they were on the agenda? Okay. Okay. So, Michelle, we'll come right back to this. I wanted to make a suggestion to the board, many of the other town meetings start at 7:00 as opposed to 7:30, I think we're one of the only ones that start at 7:30, so we were looking to maybe sync ourselves up with the 7:00 start. I recognize that some of us have to travel from work and things like that, so is there any immediate concern or issue with that? And would we be agreeable to maybe try this out starting in September, so get us through the summer months, but starting in September? And then if it doesn't work out, we can always change the meeting time back to 7:30 if it becomes a hardship? Tom, do we make a motion for something like that, or is the-
Advertise for public hearings and everything, right?
Right, right, so the reason I think we would wait for a few months before we did this is because Pam would do some work to make sure that all of the advertisements and everything were updated correctly.
I think the burden falls on the professionals and on the people on the board who work, not myself not being one of them, I think I should be quiet if I change the meeting.
Rubbing it in.
I'm just being serious, for some people who get stuck working ridiculously late hours, 7:00.
Do we note it, Mr. Wilbur? Michelle, Brendan, is that, I know Joe left already, but-
As long as Bob goes and puts my kids to bed, we're fine. And 7:00 is fine.
Make a motion that we move our start times to 7:00 PM.
As of September 3rd?
As of September 3rd.
Okay, have a second, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay, and again, if it doesn't work out, we can, we can always revisit it. Oh, did we have a no down? Okay. And then Michelle, you just handed out the cover sheet for us?
Yeah, it's, it's just a new cover sheet that actually Pam crafted, and I, partly I handed it out because we changed the time, but also, it's just, it's just a new cover letter so people can understand more clearly, hopefully cut down on the number of phone calls that Pam's dealing with as far as like when the meetings are and all that kind of stuff. And then also just describes at the bottom, the documents that we want people to be looking at when they do their secret review. So that they look at the, the hazard mitigation plan is actually currently on the website right now, it's, it's new, and it's in a draft form, they haven't finalized it yet, but that will be a great tool, planning tool as we go forward. And Hudsonia is up there too, as well.
Is there a need where we have the submission deadlines, is there a need, especially with the public hearing, the 15 days prior? If something's not received 15 days prior, is there, is there a consequence or a step that we can take for that, or is it just a-
They shouldn't go on the agenda, I guess, right, that's all they're-
Well, because the public hearings are usually advertised, that's why, and we advertise 25 days prior. So I, I kind of always wanted to sync up the submission with the advertising, so that we know we don't even advertise if we don't have the material? At least to open a public hearing? You're looking at me funny.
She's tired.
She has more craft than to do.
So, so that for the initial public hearing, when they do the advertising, the actual submission for that public hearing should be in prior to the advertising? So it'd be actually 25 days prior for the initial public hearing, and then 15 days if it's an adjourned? I'm just suggesting it because we've had situations where we're sitting here and we're not looking at the right plan, or we're looking at a plan that's brought to us that night, and that's not the best way to-
Is the site posting in the letters to what soon would say that- Except for people are- Well, then it doesn't go in the paper, and the public hearing doesn't occur, the submission's not-
Right. I'm just throwing it out there, because that way we don't end up in a situation where we're opening a public hearing that's not ready.
That if, if documents aren't filed by a certain date, the public hearing will be canceled. So we could do that down.
Leaving it as the 15 days, you mean?
Right, 15 days, because the legal aid in the papers, five days, five days. So the, we, 25 days before we send the letters to the-
Right.
Or modify those letters to say that-
Okay.
If the submission isn't received by, you know, 15 days, then check the website as the public hearing did not take place.
Okay, and then Brendan, Michelle, as our professionals, 15 days is sufficient for you, are you comfortable with that? Yes. Yeah, I mean, you should be honest, if it's not, you know, it doesn't do anybody any good for you guys not to have time.
The issue is, it's not really 15 days, it's, it's, the problem is, because we have the pre-meeting typically eight days before, and there are some days when we won't pick up, because there's like a long weekend or something, so sometimes we pick up only like two or three days before we have to have a letter done.
Which is why I, I'm just throwing it out there.
Plus, you know, on any projects, it's the same, you could have the little three-lot subdivision there, you could have the Homesteads. I mean, so it's great for Parkview, but not good for the Homesteads. You've got to keep that in mind, too.
So is that the argument, to make it longer than 15 days, or?
Well, I'm just saying that, you know, in terms of getting a review letter out, it depends how many pages you, what to score for.
One day, one day per living unit.
Well, or maybe what you have to do is, when you schedule a public hearing on a larger project, you set a date far enough out, but they will know that plans are not in 25 days before nothing goes out.
Okay. So let's say, but doing the planning office 15 days prior to the public hearing, or, or as set by the planning board at the time the hearing is scheduled, or something like that?
Scott, if there's a chance where you're not going to be in a meeting, can somebody else from your department be here? There's just a couple of times where people are here and there was some questions.
And also, I'd like you to think about too, is some towns, when prior to the meeting, 15 minutes or so before the public comes in, and the plans are hanging around on the mall, I know it's a second work, everybody, but they sometimes put like a fork strip and hang the plans so that the public, for 30 minutes before the meeting-
Oh, I like that idea.
Yeah.
I really like that idea.
I can't see that.
Probably hanging up the-
Tom, Tom, to clarify, we would, we would tell the applicants they need to do that, or would you say the planning office would do that?
You don't hang up the whole set of plans, but you hang up-
The main drawing.
The submission thing, and what you do is just on your agenda, you say, you know, the building's open 15 minutes before the meeting and plans are built.
Okay.
Is that only for public hearings, though?
Excuse me?
That's only for public hearings. Because they really have no say in discussions.
No, I know that, but what it does is, it works out when you have glitches in your audio and people just look at, and then like this evening, you saw somebody-
I don't have a problem with that.
Transparency.
Transparency's good.
Well, I mean, even if we put the strip right, right across this wall under the screen, you could hang them right there. Okay.
Or if you want to limit it just to those that are off the public hearing, and you just hang them on, and have it available before they-
You could leave them out there, so that people can look at them until the meeting's called.
Yeah, not sit there and be looking at them all.
No, if you leave that day, you have to buy easels.
Jason, I just want to go back, did you mean for something that we're doing in-house, or?
No, but I just said, at our meetings, having somebody here.
Because typically, nobody else in the department gets involved in the projects.
Anything?
Right, now, if it's something we're reviewing in-house, then definitely I could have somebody here if I can't be here. But, but to get somebody up to speed on eight items, you're going to ask them a question out of left field, and they're not going to know anyway.
Okay. Anything else for this evening? Greg, you will come back next time, right? I promise, they're not usually left as late as this, I do promise that.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Thanks, guys.